Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special joint meeting of the Hayward City Council and the Hayward Redevelopment Successor Agency. We will start, I will call this meeting to order, and we will start it with the Pledge of Allegiance. So join me from wherever you are. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all. Thank you for joining. Madam City Clerk, will you call a roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor, good evening. Member Lambon?
Here.
Member Marquez?
Present.
Member Mendel? Absent. Member Salinas?
Present.
Member Wahab?
Here.
Members Zermeño?
Present.
Mayor and Chair Halliday?
Here. So we have five members of the council here this evening. I will say that the two members who are absent, I know that we had originally planned...
Only Councilmember Mendel is absent.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one member absent this evening. Sorry, councilmembers, I mean, you are here. But I know you, yes, well, anyway, I think in Councilmember Mendel's case, we had planned to be on recess at this time before the COVID crisis hit. And so I know he had made arrangements to be away and had financial, money at stake to go away, so he decided he and his family would go ahead and do that. So because COVID came along and the budget was delayed, we went back to our original We had planned to change it because of the school calendar, but schools are out anyway for who knows how long. So here we are. So we have six members present tonight. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Lawson, would you please give us the announcement from the closed session this evening?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There were five members at the closed session with Councilmembers Mendel and Zermeño absent. There were two items in closed session. The first was, as noted on a closed session agenda, the Sazan Workers' Compensation matter, as to which the council, by motion of Mr. Salinas, seconded by Ms. Marquez, approved direction to compromise and settle that matter. As to the second item pending litigation, City of Hayward versus California State University Trustees, the council discussed and gave direction to staff that action is not reportable at this time. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Now, it's my privilege to make a presentation and issue a proclamation from the City of Hayward for Muslim Awareness and Appreciation Month. And so I'll just go ahead and read it. Whereas Hayward, California, is the third most diverse place in the United States with a commitment to being an inclusive, equitable, and compassionate community; and whereas, enriched by the unparalleled diversity of its residents, Hayward takes great pride in supporting individual religious freedoms and is strengthened by the many varied religious, political, and cultural traditions of its diverse population, including those residents who practice Islam. And whereas the history of Islam in this country dates back to before its founding, originating with African slaves who brought their Muslim beliefs with them to the Americas and who later contributed in numerous ways to the founding of the nation. And today, there are millions of American Muslims, both immigrant and native-born, of diverse backgrounds and beliefs. And whereas the United States benefits greatly from the expertise, patriotism, and humanitarianism of American Muslims, who have long distinguished themselves as courageous and dedicated members of the United States Armed Forces, fighting and sacrificing in every major war, from the American Revolution to the present-day conflicts, and who regularly contribute to the health and vitality of their communities, giving food to the hungry, sheltering the needy, and providing health services, serving on volunteer commissions, among other community services. And whereas although the majority of American Muslims strive to promote peace and understanding between all faiths, identities, and nationalities, they have nonetheless been forced to endure harassment, assault, and discrimination. It is therefore appropriate to acknowledge and promote awareness of the myriad invaluable contributions of American Muslims in Hayward and across the country, and extend the respect and camaraderie every resident deserves. And whereas Hayward is home to five ethnically diverse mosques, who each have a history of giving back to the community, including during this COVID-19 pandemic, when Muslim doctors, nurses, respiratory therapists, restaurant owners, and other professionals and volunteers who reside in Hayward have stepped up on the front lines and have embodied Islamic principles of community service and helping their neighbors in need regardless of race, religion, or color. And whereas the Muslim community is a thriving part of this great city and continues to make significant social, cultural, and economic contributions in numerous fields, such as science, education, politics, film, athletics, and many others, therefore, I, Barbara Halliday, Mayor of the City of Hayward, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2020 as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month in the City of Hayward as a means to condemn all hate crimes and discrimination against anyone regardless of religion or appearance, and to afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate our rich diversity. And I will say that, first of all, I want to acknowledge the contribution made to us doing this presentation by Councilmembers Lambon and Wahab, and thank them for suggesting it. We have received some very supportive, well, I am not presenting this, obviously not physically, to anyone here this evening. We are issuing this proclamation, and I have received some very supportive emails, including one from Julie Greenfield, who is the president of the Eden Area Interfaith Council. And I just wanted to read her comment, part of her comments. "To our Muslim sisters and brothers, we say, 'Thank you for being here among us and making us richer and warmer, and making us a richer and warmer place than we were. To our community, we say, 'Aren't we lucky to live in a place where we value each tradition and learn from each other?'" And to us, the Hayward City Government, she says, "Thank you for setting the example of friendship and acceptance." So thank you, Julie Greenfield, President of the Eden Area Interfaith Council, and thank you, Councilmembers Lambon and Wahab. And actually, this is the fifth anniversary of the California Assembly's designation of August as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. And I'll just note that Islamic Relief USA partnered with Rise Against Hunger in Hayward to pack 50,000 meals that were sent overseas. So we do appreciate, and I could cite many other examples, some of which I've been somewhat involved in myself, of our mosques in our city stepping up and helping people and serving their community. So, thank you. And with that, unless any of the councilmembers have any comments about this, can you put them, just, um, up?
There's nothing.
Yeah. Councilmember Wahab, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I primarily, you know, last year, we had August as a recess, just like this year, so it, a lot of community members' plans last year. But as you stated, former Hayward City Councilmember and current Assemblymember Bill Quirk and many co-authors introduced August as Muslim Appreciation Month in June to California, the state of California. And I remember working with a coalition of local community members in this district that were working on the text of this resolution to ensure the history of the Muslim community be included in the House resolution. And when this was first brought up, people were so excited to have their identity and history recognized by the state government, most importantly, in a positive light. So Assemblymember Quirk, who worked hard to get this done, in return, besides praise from the community, he also received threats to his physical safety and much more pushback. That plainly should not be the case, and not in the United States and definitely not in the Bay Area. The community now and in the future will be grateful for his leadership on this issue and his efforts to be more inclusive. I remember specific, in 2018, at the Golden Peacock Banquet Hall in Hayward, former Hayward staffer, Mr. David Korth, gave the Muslim community a proclamation for Muslim Appreciation Month from you, Mayor Halliday. You weren't able to attend the event, I believe you were ill, but I remember the local coalition of diverse set of Muslim people who were so happy to have received this acknowledgement from their city, the city that prides itself in diversity and the fact that there is no room for racism. There are five mosques in the City of Hayward, each with a different set of demographics and history, and they were able to come together. I personally am very proud to honor a community that has been part of the United States' history since its inception with Muslim African slaves who built this country. I'm definitely honored to be the first elected Muslim woman on Hayward City Council and in the East Bay. And as strongly as I believe in the separation of church and state, I also believe all cultures need to be highlighted and made to feel welcomed in this country and in the Bay Area, and specifically our own city. So I genuinely want to extend my things to council and to highlight councilmember's efforts on this evenings. I thought of work, collaboration, e, on, to make it possible. So I definitely want to thank Councilmember Lambon for her leadership on this item. And most importantly, I want to thank the community for their tireless work and effort to ensure their children have a place to grow up without being discriminated against and feel safe. Primarily, I want everyone to know that when community members are involved, speak up, and try their best, they are ensuring that our future is brighter, more inclusive, and that we live by the fact that all men and women are created equal. So thank you.
Thank you. I think we got most out of it, a couple did cut out, so I'm not sure what's happening there from your end, but we did hear most of what you said, so thank you. All right. And with that, we're going to move into public comments. If you would like to make a public comment on items not otherwise on the agenda, now is the time. For any public comments this evening, either now, for items not on the agenda, or later for items that are on the agenda, the number to call is 510-583-4400. Madam City Clerk, I believe we did have at least one public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three members of the public wishing to speak.
Okay. We have a long agenda tonight, so I am going to set a two-minute per-comment time limit.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Yes, hello, I wanted to thank the council for recognizing August as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. This is incredibly important, especially in the climate that exists where we see Islamophobia and discrimination and school bullying regularly. It's important that we have councils such as yours to recognize this month and also the contributions that American Muslims have brought to this country. We've been part of its founding, actually even before its founding, and so it's incredibly important to recognize the contributions that Muslims have, you know, in this country and in this city as well. So we thank you for this recognition. You know, as you know, given the COVID crisis, the Muslim community has stepped up by giving, you know, thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands even, of donations in COVID assistance, along with providing medical help and providing food and other donations as well. So we thank you again for recognizing this month, and yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, next caller, please.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Halliday and councilmembers, this is Arzo Madhavi. I am the Chair of the Community Services Commission and a Muslim-American Hayward resident. I would like to thank you for highlighting and commemorating the many contributions made by our Muslim residents in Hayward through this proclamation. Declaring August as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month means a great deal to those of us who have faced discrimination based on the religion we have chosen to practice. The proclamation made by the City of Hayward and your council is a gesture of support and solidarity with the Muslim community and comes at a time where anti-Muslim rhetoric and attitudes have spiked. The proclamation is celebrated and welcomed by the Muslim community in Hayward. With it, our beloved city is acknowledging our place in this community and telling us that all are welcome in the city. It shows us that diversity is a strength to be celebrated, so I thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Arzo, and thank you for your own contributions. I know one of the things I was thinking of when I was reading that was the time, a couple of years ago, during one of the big fires up north, that you collected donations, and I remember bringing them down to the mosque down there on Mission. And you, I think you actually shared recently at a meeting I was at, you know, a little bit about that, your journey up to, I believe it was Santa Rosa, but I could be wrong. Anyway, thank you so much for your call and for your contributions to our community.
Thank you so much, bye.
Bye.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Munir Safi. Thank you so much for honoring August as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. I represent the five Hayward mosques with the Eden Area Interfaith Council, which I was part of founding in 2015 shortly after we had a bias attack on Muslim men praying at Lake Chiboo. So for the thousands of Hayward residents who are Muslim, you know, we've certainly lived in uncertain times. The effects of the national political rhetoric about our faith has been real, but the impact of Islamophobia has also been real. And even in our little progressive bubble here in the Bay Area, we've heard from congregation members feeling intimidated by an unfriendly stare, a racist comment, an intimidating approach. And there is about a half of Muslim public students surveyed in California who reported bullying, about 40% of those, they reported coming from a teacher. In the workforce, Bay Area employees and applicants who are Muslim have filed lawsuits against employers and warned them on the basis of religious discrimination. So that's why today's proclamation is vital, is so important. So thank you. Please continue to speak up publicly in support of your Muslim neighbor, and this makes a world of difference for your constituents who are Muslim. There's absolutely no room for racism in our town. So again, thank you for this proclamation and this recognition.
Thank you. Are there any other callers, Madam City Clerk?
Please go ahead. Hi, my name is Cynthia Nunes. I am calling on behalf of the Hayward Community Coalition and update. Last night, there was a town hall meeting discussing policing in schools and SROs. I'm not sure if any of you are aware, there was somebody who did hack the Zoom meeting last night. It was an angry white supremacist that made comments that we're not only racist, but also threatening lives of people in our community. So I just want to point out that, you know, your job as councilmember is to make sure something is done about this. Racism is so very much alive right now in this country, in this world, but specifically still here in Hayward. So we want to make sure that we are bringing this to your attention, so there can be some action towards this, to be proactive to stop the racism here in Hayward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think that City Manager has a comment in response to that.
Yeah, and I want to just express, I heard earlier this afternoon verbally and via email about what happened yesterday evening, and I'm absolutely disgusted by what I understand happened last night, and I'm sorry for anyone who was on that Zoom call who had to listen to that and hear those comments. So we did connect with some of the folks who are on the call. Our police department is already launching a criminal investigation and is collecting the evidence right now. So we will follow up to the extent that the law allows in pursuing action against those individuals.
Thank you for doing that, and thank you for, you know, bringing that to our attention so that we could launch that investigation. And we are serious about our commitment to know, you know, to investigate and prosecute hate crimes and to end discrimination and racism in Hayward. So, you know, we all get, I'm the City Council, I know my colleagues on the City Council, probably, I would imagine, on the school board too, get those emails every once in a while that are just repulsive and it makes us sick. The only consolation is it's very, very few in terms of all the many other emails we get from people who are, you know, who are actually have something valid to say. But it is very upsetting to get them, and we will do our best to eliminate this, but it's a difficult task when people are really entrenched in their beliefs. So I think the more that we can educate and do what we've had to educate all of our community members about the contributions made by various groups of people who, you know, who may be the targets of some of this harassment and discrimination, the better off we will be. And we just all need to continue doing that. Okay, Madam City Clerk, are there any more callers?
No additional callers, Madam Mayor.
All right, then, we'll move on from public comments and move to our consent calendar, which this evening is items one through eight. And we are pulling, City Manager has asked that item six, adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to negotiate a letter agreement with 1069 B Street LLC to defer rent and parking maintenance payments for Cinema Place. That item is being withdrawn by our city staff and will come back at a later date, I believe. So with that...
And then Councilmember Wahab needs to pull items seven and eight.
And eight, okay. Okay, Councilmember Wahab is pulling seven and eight. So any others? I'm not seeing...
Mayor, I'll move item one through five.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Items one through five have been moved by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Lambon. Madam City Clerk, will you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lambon?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel? Absent. Councilmember Salinas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño?
Yes.
Mayor Halliday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are not, we are eliminating item six this evening. So item seven is adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Alameda County Public Works Agency for the Hisparian Boulevard and West A Street Protected Intersection Project and appropriate $1,250,056 for this project from Measure BB, Local Transportation Fund 212, Measure B, yeah, well, Measures BB and the Transportation System Improvement Fund. So, Councilmember Wahab?
Thank you, Mayor. Primarily, I pulled this item because we are directed to pull any item that we kind of live nearby. I live pretty much in this neighborhood of Hisparian and West A Street. I have informed our City Manager, City Clerk, and City Attorney about this, and I was given direction that, to potentially just make an announcement. I have no direct or familial benefit from this item being voted on, neither in approving it or denying it. I do rent in this area and live very close to the area being worked on, but there is no direct benefit or even indirect benefit to me. So I just wanted to highlight that for the public.
Okay, so are you going to participate in the...
Yeah, I'm allowed to participate.
Okay, yes, yes, I understand. Great. So, is there anyone else? I will go ahead and move this item, and I would like to say that I'm very glad to see this item coming. This is, you know, this is a step in making our, one of our major, you know, areas of Hayward, West Hayward, Hisparian Boulevard, safer for bicyclists, at least at this intersection. And to the north, the county is going to see that there are improvements to Hisparian Boulevard to the north of this intersection, because that's in their jurisdiction. And I would like for us to do, as soon as possible, to turn our attention to south of the intersection, Hisparian Boulevard, to continue those improvements in that area and make, you know, make things safer, especially for bicyclists and pedestrians. It was noted in the staff report, there's a lot of, there are a lot of bus routes that go through this intersection, and a lot of people getting off those buses and maybe walking to their destination. So this is a very timely project that fits in very well with our safe streets.
Second.
Streets, so I'll move it. Councilmember Zermeño has seconded the item. I don't, okay, and I don't see anyone wanting to speak on it. So with that, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll on the motion by me and seconded by Councilmember Zermeño?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lambon?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño?
Yes.
Mayor Halliday?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item number eight, which is adoption of a resolution authorizing and appropriating additional emergency funding in response to the novel coronavirus, as we all know as COVID-19. So, Councilmember Wahab?
Yes, thank you. I primarily pulled this item. I am genuinely concerned about the amount of spending we are able to do as the city moves into, you know, deeper financial concerns. The coronavirus is stated to be with us for some time. We, at this point, there's no end in sight. So I'm very, very concerned about spending more money around this, and I just wanted to ask our City Manager if we are trying to develop any further partnerships, as we know that we are not dollar-for-dollar reimbursed, but if we can be very clear as to, are we partnering with anybody to kind of eat the cost as well?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Wahab. We did, the council did approve an original allocation of $3 million. Of that, to date, we have spent about almost $3.2 million and have received $1 million in reimbursement from another agency, that would be City of Fremont and City of Vallejo, who bought test kits from us from our allocation. We are actually waiting on, the County Board of Supervisors did approve an MOU with the City of Hayward for the testing site, so we are waiting for reimbursement for another million and a half dollars of that original $3 million, so that's $2.5 million of the $3.1 million that we've spent that will be reimbursed to us. Going forward, the county will be paying for test kits at the testing site. I do have announcements later on under City Banter comments. We will be making some changes at our testing site going forward, given the MOU with the county. They do need us to ask for medical insurance for those who have... They do need us to ask for medical insurance for those who have insurance coverage. We will still be able to provide free tests for those who do not have insurance. But for those individuals who are coming through the testing center that do have medical insurance, we will need to collect that information so that we can get reimbursement for that. So that will help us going forward. Um, in addition, uh, we will be receiving, it looks like almost $2 million in CARES Act funding from the state allocation. So I, at this point, you know, um, that puts us at about net zero in terms of our overall emergency expenses. So, um, with all of those reimbursements, so just to respond to your concerns.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I definitely want that to be a highlighted issue as, as we move forward. Because again, you know, some say that we'll have to deal with coronavirus for two, two years or even further. Um, I also just want to highlight our firefighters that are working the testing site. Um, considering that we are pretty much in fire season, I just want to make sure that if there is another significant fire, for example, like Paradise fires that happen and so forth, that we, um, and our firefighters are the ones that, you know, do definitely spend their time and go out, that we have enough time and we're not maxing out on their time and kind of bring up, um, their focus to focus on, on, you know, fires, if you will. So, um, I, I just want that to be a consideration as we move forward as well.
And the council did approve an MOU, um, a couple of weeks ago. We have a new partnership with Tversia Vasquez where their, their nursing students are actually now doing the testing at the test site. So we've relieved most of our fire personnel, um, to be able to respond to wildfires and other fire emergencies. So, uh, the site is now almost completely staffed with, um, Tversia Vasquez.
Okay, so that transition.
Sorry, La Familia, I apologize, La Familia, the wrong, wrong, wrong agency, La Familia. But nursing students and nurses, um, employed through La Familia.
And I know we were going to do a slow transition, so that, that has been completed 100%?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
So is, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? I think they come up.
I, I move, I move in the item.
Second.
Okay, moved by, uh, the item is moved by Councilmembers Armentia, seconded by Councilmember Marquez.
Yes, Mayor. And I, and just to clarify, I believe the partnership, as City Manager mentioned, is with La Familia Counseling Services Staff and then CSU East Bay Nursing Students. And, um, Eden Health District has also provided financial grants to allow this to continue. So I know we'll hear more updates later, but I know the city is focusing on leveraging partnerships and ensuring that we get reimbursed these costs. So thank you for that good work.
Okay. And with that, um, Madam City Clerk, will you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lambman.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas.
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab.
Yes.
Councilmember Sermanio.
Yes.
Mayor Halliday.
Yes. And the motion passes with six side votes and one number absent. All right. Moving right along to item number nine. Our public hearing item this evening is the, um, regarding the Costco Business Center Fuel Facility. A proposed development of a fuel facility with related site improvements at the Costco Business Center located on Hathaway Avenue. Um, that's near A Street, not the other Costco at the other end of the city, the one in the northern part. Um, so this involves, uh, this requires a approval of a major modification to an existing plan, existing plan development zoning district. Um, and so I will turn this over now to, um, is it Development Services Director Simpson? Who's going to start us off on this one?
Yes, thank you. Um, this is Laura Simpson. Um, I'm going to introduce our associate planner, Marcus Martinez, who will be presenting the item tonight. And he will introduce our consultant team, who is also available. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Marcus Martinez, and thank you for that introduction, Laura. Um, I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen with the presentation so I can share that with you all. Okay. I hope that is working.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay. So the item before you tonight is an application for a proposed fuel facility at the Costco Business Center here in the city of Hayward. To provide you some context on the project site, the Costco Business Center, the Costco Business Center is located in North Hayward at the northeast corner of A Street and Hathaway Avenue. And the property is approximately a quarter mile from the Interstate 880 freeway. Zooming into the project site, the project site is located at 22330 Hathaway Avenue. And looking in a little bit closer, the specific project site comprises of about 2.1 acres of the entire 10.87 acre Costco Business Center property, um, which abuts the existing industrial development to the north, as well as the railroad tracks to the east of the project site. The project site is located in an existing plan development PD zoning district with a corresponding land use designation of, of mixed industrial. To provide a brief overview of the project, the applicant is seeking approval of an application for a major modification of an existing plan development PD zoning district to allow for the land use and development of the following. A proposed fuel facility, also known as a gas station, with a 9,350 square foot canopy, inclusive of 12 dispensers equated to 24 fueling positions. The project will also require the demolition of an existing vacant tire and service building to be, to be replaced with related site improvements such as landscaping, stormwater management, and enhanced site circulation. In regard, excuse me, in regard to the site design and circulation, the fuel facility is proposed to be located in the northernmost corner of the property. Originally, the applicant planned, through previous applications, to situate the gas station at the corner of A Street and Hathaway Avenue. Based on the submitted parking demand analysis required by the city, it was determined that the corner area previously proposed had the highest parking use by patrons and employees. Um, in addition, the previous location did not provide the most optimal site circulation. Thus, um, the facility was moved to the northern corner where less utilized parking areas are located and allows for an enhanced site circulation, queuing, and egress from the fueling area. The fuel facility will be accessed by two points of access along Hathaway Avenue, a signalized intersection, as well as a non-signalized driveway. Per the conditions of approval, the gas station will be allowed to operate from 6:00 AM to 9:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday. As of right now, Costco anticipates that the gas station will be closed on Sundays, consistent with their business center hours. In order to accommodate the development, the site will lose 105 parking spaces, which will result in a total deficit of 65 parking spaces per our off-street, our off-street parking regulations of the Hayward Municipal Code. As stated in the previous slide, the city required a parking demand analysis to be prepared, which determined that even with the post-development parking supply of 398 parking spaces, the site will still have adequate parking to serve the business center operation. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared to assess the environmental impacts of the project. Impacts that were identified as part of the analyses were related to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, and, and noise. As a result, mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project conditions of approval and mitigation monitoring and reporting program to reduce, to reduce those project impacts to a level of less than significant. The ISMD was subject to a 20-day review period, which stretched from September 27th to October 17th of 2019. During the public comment period, two comment letters were received that have been included in the response to comments document attached to the staff report. Staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the underlying general plan land use designation of mixed industrial, which allows for warehousing and automobile service uses. And the project is consistent with the following goals and policies listed on the slide above. Staff also believes that the proposed project is a compatible ancillary use to the existing Costco Business Center, which will result in an overall positive economic impact on the Hayward community, as well as result in a higher and better use than the underutilized parking areas in the northern corner of the site and redevelopment of the vacant tire center building. On November 2000, on November 14th, 2019, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed project at a public hearing. One public comment was received from an adjacent gas station owner and operator along A Street. Uh, and ultimately, the commission voted four-three to recommend that the city council deny the proposed application for the following reasons. The lack of onsite sustainability measures, such as solar panels and/or EV chargers for vehicles, to offset the impact of, of the new development and loss of parking. Uh, the perception of potential traffic impacts along A Street and Hathaway Avenue, and that there are already enough gas stations present along the A Street corridor. Since the Planning Commission, the applicant's team has reevaluated their proposed onsite amenities and have included the following into their project. The conversion and rehabilitation of approximately 5,750 square feet of existing landscape area to be updated to comply with the city's water-efficient landscape ordinance, which is beyond the minimum code requirement. A transportation demand management program for Costco Business Center employees, where Costco will offer subsidized transit passes to acing transit, given the site's proximity to bus stops. The applicant has also proposed to retrofit all existing parking lot lighting fixtures to LED for the entire site in order to promote energy efficiency and the reduction of light pollution. In addition, the applicant has proposed to install eight electrical shore power stations for their commercial delivery fleet onsite, which can charge up to 16 vehicles that will, that will assist in reducing idling vehicles that generate emissions and noise. And lastly, the applicant, um, will install two electrical vehicle chargers with the capacity to accommodate up to four customer or employee vehicles, along with future conduits, um, that will allow the potential creation of three future EV chargers, um, that would accommodate an additional six vehicles. Staff, staff maintains its original recommendation that the city council approve the major modification to the existing plan development zoning district to allow for the land use and development for the fuel facility and adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Um, in addition, the city's Sequoet Consultant, LSA, is also on the call if there are any questions related to the environmental review. And the applicant and their team also have a short presentation. Thank you.
All right. Um, does the applicant want to go ahead with his short presentation before we open up to questions and to the public here?
All right, hello?
Yes, yes, uh, yes.
Good evening. Yeah, sorry, I'm just getting set up here. Uh, my name's Sean Anderson from Barghousen Consulting Engineers out of Kent, Washington. And, uh, also with me tonight in the meeting here is our project team. So as we get into people, if there are any questions, uh, we can call on them. We want to say that we reviewed the staff report and confirm that we compare with the findings and conditions, uh, from staff. Uh, thank you to Marcus and the team for all their hard work along the way. Uh, with that, Marcus, could you move us to slide two, please? This project represents Costco's ongoing commitment, serving members and businesses in the Hayward community. It began with the opening of the Business Center in 1987 and a separate warehouse in 2009. The fuel facility is also the most commonly requested service by members and businesses that shop at the Business Center. Since Costco began operating in Hayward, they've been a strong employment tax generating business that continuously invests in their facilities and have also given back to various charitable causes within the community. More recently, Costco played and continues to play a critical role in the COVID-19 response, remaining open as an essential retail business, providing access to critical supplies for both members and businesses within the community. Uh, Marcus, slide three. During the Planning Commission hearing in November, a number of items were identified that needed further consideration. This table outlines the items raised and the findings of our analysis. To summarize these issues, it was clear further evaluation of alternative energy solutions and economic impacts was necessary, and answers were needed on traffic and air quality impacts. Looking at the suggested alternative energy solutions, being EV charging and solar power, we determined that solar power is not a viable solution due to factors such as compatibility with the fuel facility power demands, in-site and building suitability. However, we were, as Marcus, uh, mentioned, able to incorporate two EV stations near the main Business Center building with conduits to add three future stations as demand increases. We took a closer look at rush hour traffic and left turn lane impacts along A Street, found that there would be no significant impacts during evening commute hours or left turn lane impacts on A Street as shown in the initial study. Uh, we also commissioned a market analysis, which found no long-term negative impacts to surrounding gas stations for reasons we'll discuss shortly. And air quality will not be significantly impacted by the project and will continue to meet all local and federal regulations and remain under the sequel thresholds as described in the initial study. We've added features to the fuel facility concept that was recommended for denial by Planning Commission that are intended to bring the project in closer alignment with the goals of the city. However, fundamentally, the project's scope has not changed. We have responded to questions raised by Planning Commissioners to confirm that the project will not adversely impact the community and is consistent with city plans and policies. Uh, Marcus, slide four. During the Planning Commission hearing, further clarification was sought to distinguish between the current projects and the previous iterations that were denied in 1999 and 2002. In addition to the recent refinements, the current site plan reflects changes to address previous issues, notably locating the facility in the northeast corner parking area to address visibility and circulation issues. Equally important, since the previous determination, a number of governing documents have been amended or dissolved. As a result, findings related to policy documents, such as the Downtown Hayward Redevelopment Plan and the Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan, do not apply. In addition, the project is consistent with the updated general plan and remains consistent with the Canary area, uh, design plan, as, uh, mentioned by Marcus. Further, the project includes features that better compensate for the parking reduction request, such as a transportation demand management plan, additional landscaping, and sustainability efforts. In summary, due to policy changes and project refinements, the current proposal better aligns with the city's land use goals and policies. Marcus, slide five. To address the concern about the market impact on existing gas stations within the city, we commissioned a market study from ALH Urban in Regional Economics. The analysis looked at case studies in cities where Costco built a new fuel facility, and the findings showed that after a small impact on, uh, initial impact on sales, business surrounding the stations restabilized within six months. During the initial period after opening, it's expected about 2% of gas sales could be diverted from existing stations. However, based on the case studies, this impact is expected to weigh in over a six-month period. Uh, Marcus, slide six. Finally, to address the Planning Commission's issues around alternative energy, the city's overall goals of permitting, and the city's overall goals of promoting sustainability, the project includes a number of additional features worth noting. Beyond the previously discussed EV charging stations, the project will also include upgrading the existing parking lot lighting for the whole Business Center to LED, as well as using LED fixtures at the fuel facility. The installation of eight shore power stations or 16 chargers to eliminate idling from refrigeration trucks. Uh, the addition of approximately 5,700 square feet of landscaping, and again, the implementation of the Transportation Demand Management Plan. Marcus, final slide. We believe the project being presented tonight is a great step forward in the design and addition of a fuel facility. It brings with it a number of meaningful improvements to the overall site. This will allow Costco to continue operating a state-of-the-art business center that promotes or provides a full range of services to meet the demands of their members and businesses and continues to meet the goals of the city and community. With that, uh, that's our presentation. We're available to answer any questions.
All right. Are there questions from council?
Mayor, I have a few questions.
Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you. Um, my first question is for staff. Um, I know that this is allowable use per the general plan. Um, can you tell me when was the last time a gas station was approved in the city of Hayward? Um, I can't think of any in the last, at least eight years, but I'm wondering if staff has record of that.
Um, unfortunately, I do not. I've only been with the city about three and a half years. And I know within my tenure, I don't believe any new gas stations have been improved. Um, so unfortunately, I do not have the information. I am also accompanied by Paul Nguyen, our Economic Development Manager, who I know has a little bit of a longer tenure here, so I'm not sure if he has any knowledge. But at least within the last three and a half years and during my time here, um, there have not been any new gas stations.
Okay. And then you discussed that initially they were looking at the A Street and Hathaway corner, and then it was ultimately decided to move it to the northern part of, um, the campus. Can you please kind of reiterate why that decision was made? I, I think you alluded to something with regard to parking.
Correct, yeah. So, um, where they were proposing to currently have, or where they're originally proposing back in their 1999, 2002 applications was to situate the gas dishearing. Um, as you're coming down A Street, it would have been the most prominent location of the Costco Business Center, um, property. Costco Business Center property. But under analysis and requesting a parking demand analysis, we realized that that was the most highly utilized area for both patrons and employees to park there, and understanding that they were going to lose parking to accommodate the site development. What that study also, what that analysis came out of that parking supply analysis was that that back corner kind of tucked away was the least utilized, so that seemed like the most appropriate location to put that. It'd also allow for additional queuing onsite, so we weren't going to have vehicles that were like hanging off Hathaway Avenue in order to obtain gas.
Okay. And then you mentioned one signal light intersection and another exit from the parkway. That's existing, correct? They're not.
Correct.
Okay. And then the rest of my questions are for the applicant. So staff mentioned that the business center is closed on Sundays, so is that accurate, that the facility will not be operating on Sundays?
Initially corrected, will not operate on Sundays.
Okay. And then do you need to have a Costco business membership to utilize the gas station, or is it just a general membership?
It is available to members as well as the business members.
Okay. And then are you doing any upgrades to the building paint, any kind of outdoor capital improvement given if this project is approved? Are any of those plans in the works?
No, the scope of the project will simply be the fuel facility, as well as the demolition removal of the existing entire center building, and then of course, the associated site improvements, landscaping, parking.
Okay. And the conduit for the additional EV charging stations, when do you foresee those coming live to actually be utilized by members and employees?
They would be incorporated with the project's scope, so sometime around the completion of the fuel facility, the conduits and stations would be installed, and then the two initial stations would be available around that time.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions for the applicant. I do have one follow-up question for staff. Marcus, can you tell me since submitting, or since the staff report went published, have we received any additional comments from the public or the surrounding neighborhood?
No. Councilmember Marquez, there have been no comments, no additional comments.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Salinas.
Thank you. Let's see, I have a couple of questions for both staff and for Mr. Anderson. And you know, Mr. Martinez, I know during the council infrastructure committee, we were talking about the timeline to, you know, redevelop, or what's the right word, to reconstruct the A Street underpass that goes underneath, you know, the freeway, the 880 freeway. And I'm just curious, and I forget the timeline. Do you have any sense, or maybe, I don't know if Mr. Ameri is on here, but do you have any sense of what the timeline is to get that redeveloped? And because I know they were going to expand underneath the freeway, and there was going to be a lot of reconfiguring there. Do you know what the timeline, if that were to happen? I know we were still looking, but do you know what the timeline was at?
Unfortunately, I do not, but I am accompanied on the line. Transportation manager Fred Kelly, and I think I hear him right there, so I'm going to.
Councilmember Salinas, great question. The project is still underway, the 880 A Street interchange improvement is still underway, and in fact, it's going to be going before the CIC committee tomorrow for an update. The Caltrans right-of-way extends all the way to Santa Clara or Hathaway. One intersection on either side of the interchange is typically the case. So there are going to be local street improvements, and we are working with Alameda County Transportation Commission to exactly define exactly what those local street improvements are. So I think what the takeaway from this is, is that we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that if we can include any local streets, local street improvements that will enhance local street operations with that project, then we will. It's about three to four, three to five years out as far as overall completion of that project, pending full funding.
Yeah, and I know that there were different, there were different models that we were looking at with three different price tags, so I know that that was a big consideration. And I don't know if I'm getting too into the weeds here, but if, and this is for Mr. Kelly, if those improvements were to, let's say, in the optimum scenario, those improvements were to happen, how far would those improvements go either west or east on A Street? Would they go all the way to Hathaway, or would they stop short of Hathaway?
Since the Caltrans right-of-way extends to Hathaway, we would seek to have local street improvements with the interchange improvement extend all the way to Hathaway. That would be our, that would be our goal.
Okay. Okay, so that's the first question. The second question, and I don't know whether Mr. Anderson can answer this, and maybe perhaps and staff, but do we know how long Costco will be at that site? I mean, is it, I mean, are they there for, you know, for the next, you know, 30 years, 40 years? What, do you know what the, you know, we know Costco's going to rule the world one of these days, but you know, is there, do we know how long it's going to be on the corner of Hathaway and A Street?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I mean, there's really no timeframe for how long they're going to continue to exist there on the corner, other than say, their intent is to stay as long as, you know, business is good, and since they have a strong membership base. And again, it kind of goes back to the purpose of this project, but just their way of demonstrating their continued investment, not just specifically at the site, but in terms of their presence within the city. So they're in a long run, that's the purpose of this project.
And so the other question I have is, and I, while I was sitting here over the weekend thinking about A Street, and just so that you know, I live along the A Street corridor, and you know, I ride my bike through that place, you know, often, often. And you know, there's, I believe, between, on A Street, between Mission and Hisparian, there's, I think, six gas stations already. And so I guess my question is, is what's the business case for another gas station on A Street? In fact, this gas station will literally be a block, like, you know, less than 1,000 feet from another gas station, like right before you get on the freeway. So I'm just, like, what's, what's the, what's the business case?
Simply, it's for Costco to provide a full range of services at this location for their members and businesses. It's the number one requested service that's not currently there, and it's just the general plan for Costco to be able to provide that at each of their locations. It's a membership-only facility, is you're aware, potentially aware, to use a Costco facility, you need to have that, you know, membership card, be part of the club, and that's kind of what differentiates it from perhaps the other facilities that you were making reference to. But that's the simple answer. If you did have a more specific question in terms of business as it might relate to impacts, we do have representative on the line from a team that helped us with the market study as well, can answer those.
Well, I mean, I got the, I understand the market, you know, your comments related to the market study, or your market-related comments, I get those, but I guess for, you know, I'm looking at, you know, this is a corridor that's, you know, with a heavy presence of gasoline and gasoline stations, you know, just gas stations, they're all over the place. And I think I'm going to, I'm getting to the question that Councilmember Marquez asked of, is, you know, when was the last time we approved a gas station? And, you know, perhaps we haven't, because I haven't seen a new gas station come up around town in a while, and I'm just thinking, well, maybe, you know, maybe it's because we have a lot of gas stations already, but anyways, I don't want to get, you know, get too much into that, but I understood your comments regarding the market study. The other, the other question I had was, you know, I guess it's, it's the traffic, you know, and I'm just curious, have you, have you personally been out there on any given weekday or Saturday, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, in fact, I've had the fortune of visiting the site a couple of times, mostly weekday visits though.
Good, good. Because, and the reason why I ask is, you know, is, you know, this is a heavily traveled corridor. I mean, and there's, I can't imagine, I mean, I understand, you know, I looked at the analysis he had, and I'm looking at the staff report, but I can't help but to get the, I can't help not to take the image of the gasoline station at the Hisparian Costco. The Hisparian Costco, the gas station there, it's always packed. I mean, it's, I mean, there's a line all the way from, from the pumps that go, and on some days, I mean, it goes all the way back to, you know, the, there's like, there's a little frontage street in front of Eden Shores. And, and I know that's a different Costco, and I know that's more of a sort of a, you know, sort of a general Costco, I guess, yeah, that's what you can call it, not a business Costco, but the amount of traffic, I mean, in fact, it gets even pretty chaotic in the parking lot, you know, with the traffic, with the amount of traffic there. And I guess I'm just having trouble with the not having, or having very minimal impact on traffic on A Street. I guess I'm just having a hard time sort of thinking about that. Can you help me sort of resolve that? I mean, what's, what are you guys, you know, looking at, measuring?
Right. That's, that's a great question, and it's actually the perfect time for me to segue over to Amy Lopez, who's our traffic consultant, who provided the analysis and has really good answers to these questions.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez? Good afternoon.
Yes, yes. Good evening, councilmember. I'm happy to respond to your questions. It sounds like you're interested in understanding what, what in particular we analyzed on the site to understand what the effects of including gas at this location would be. So we look at a few things at all of our Costco locations when considering adding gas to the site. In this case, we looked at where to best locate the fuel facility to ensure that the queue storage area makes, that we have the greatest amount of feasible queue storage area to hold waiting members on the site. We strive to prioritize loading, locating that queue storage area away from driveways that would provide access to the local street, so that on the occasions when it's especially busy and the queues exceed the storage area, there's an opportunity to manage those queues that spill back within the site. And that's something that's been done with the revision of the site plan, as was discussed earlier, by locating the fuel facility away from that corner and to the other corner of the site, it affords us the opportunity to manage any excess queuing within the site. So those are, those are really important parts of how we manage the site. Additionally, what you observed at the other fuel facility, at the other location, is something that we are aware of as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lambon?
Thank you. Actually want to follow up on that comment, and I don't know if it's possible to show us through one of the, one of the slides, but I'm not clear where this extra queuing space is, or where people exit after fueling.
I am happy to discuss it. Let's, yep, that slide will do the trick. So, I wonder, nope, not possible.
Is your cursor now?
I was hoping so, and it's not possible, so I'll do my best to be precise with my descriptions. If we're looking at the top left of the, of the page there.
Looks like somebody's giving you a cursor.
That's very nice.
The city manager is going to curse for you.
Excellent. Better you than me. Okay. So where the, that, that white space where the cursor is right now is the departure area of the, of the fuel facility. So when members finish fueling and are departing, that area is how they would depart, yep, making that, and make that right turn to then continue into the parking field, and either if they are ready to now go into the business center, go find a place to park, or perhaps they're concluding their trip to the site, and they would, then they would exit the site. And then to speak to where members would be waiting in queue, yes, yes, indeed, yep. That's, that's the area I refer to as the queue storage area. You'll see the gray sort of speckled area has a couple different meanings, but that part, yeah, it's just indicating different materials, but looking directly to the right of that, you can see a vertical white space that kind of goes all the way up and down the site. Again, it's just referring to materials on the fuel facility, but that delineates the rightmost edge of that storage area. And then below that Costco logo that's shown there, that horizontal line is more or less what I would consider the bottom or the rear of the queue, of the intended queue storage area. If it were an especially busy day, there are occasions right before a long holiday weekend, say, something like that, when even more people come than we see during a traditional peak hour, we would plan to manage, and this is something I've worked with Costco and the operators at the location, we would work with them to manage that queue so that members would continue to queue down and to the left where there are a few parking stalls, and then continue curling around and maintain it. Mm-hmm, yes, indeed, there, and then continuing around, yes. So all of that area affords additional queuing capacity if it's needed, but the area that is immediately adjacent to the fuel canopy, or where all the pumps are, is estimated to support on the order of 32 vehicles waiting, which is what, which would be well within the demand we expect at a maximum queue for this site. That number 32 is referring to members who are waiting and does not include all of the people already in position at the pumps.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. Do you have a sense, and this is for whoever can answer the question, of what the proposed construction timeline is?
That's a good question for Shawn.
Yeah, we, if it's approved, the anticipated start would occur January 2021 and be complete by April.
Okay, so about four months, four or five months. Okay, thank you. And then last question, so I saw the responses about both traffic impact study and economic study, but in both of those, it did not seem like either the Hayward Costco gas station, which I'm guessing probably was our latest Costco, I mean, latest gas station in the city, or the San Leandro Costco gas station, which has been in operation longer. So neither of those seemed to study either the traffic impacts of those stations or the economic impacts of those stations. Can you help me understand why that was? Or if I've missed something, let me know that.
Sure. The traffic study for the projects was, I guess I could probably let Amy explain better how data might have been utilized from those locations, but maybe I'll hand that answer over to her real quick.
Sure. And councilmember, I want to make sure I answer the question you're intending. You are correct in that the traffic study for this site does not discuss the nature of gas station activity or fuel station activity at the other, at the warehouse. Is your question simply, why not? Or was it more specific than that?
No, just that those seem like comparable markets, and so from a comparison standpoint, they weren't included, so help me understand why.
Sure. So specifically around traffic, what we do look at are Costco business centers in other locations that have fuel. Because the business center itself is different than a warehouse, again, its hours are different than a warehouse. than a warehouse, and the services and products provided at the site are different, therefore it attracts a, a different clientele. We do see some differences in the fuel station activity, and so the purpose of this study, we look to other business center fuel station sites, Costco fuel stations, um, to inform the analysis for this site.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer the second part of that question regarding the market analysis, um, kind of a similar answer in terms of, uh, looking at the specific site and the aspects of it being a business center, but, um, the market analysis also intended to, um, look at potential impact, economic impact, which was something that was raised during the planning, uh, commission hearing, also to, um, take a closer look at that demand question, uh, with, um, just to, to create a better understanding of what the demand actually looked like for this particular location. We do have a representative as well available to answer questions if you have any specific questions about that market analysis.
Okay. I think that'll do it for now. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Um, councilmember Sermanio?
Here we go. Um, okay, thank you very much. Uh, Marcus, thank you for a good report, um, Ms. Lopez and Mr. Anderson, right, I believe, uh, good report also, uh, and my question, uh, some of my questions have been answered already, uh, but I have a question for Marcus. Marcus, do we know how many gas stations we have in Hayward? And do we know if any new ones are coming down the pipe?
Um, unfortunately, I do not know how many current, how many gas stations we currently have within the city, but I believe I'm, I'm like 90% sure that we do not have any current applications for gas stations, uh, for any new gas stations beyond this one.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Any, are there any other questions from council right now? All right, um, Madam City Clerk, Olive, in the public hearing, Madam City Clerk, do we have, um, any, uh, speakers, uh, any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one person at the time, uh, right now, and I'll go ahead and transfer the call. One moment, please. Please go ahead, you're on air.
Okay. Hello, my name is Frank Burton, and I live in Hayward. I want to speak in favor of the recommendation from staff that this, uh, plan be approved. I agree with that assessment that there will be an increase in sales tax for Hayward because there will be some of us Costco members that occasionally go to the San Leandro Costco for fueling, and we, it's, it's much more convenient to go to this new one at, on Hathaway and, and A Street. So that's one thing. And then the other is that I'm delighted to see that there are some EV charging stations that are in, included in this plan. Uh, I, one of my vehicles, one of my wife's and my vehicles is a plug-in hybrid, and for rarest reasons, we have to, uh, plug in away from where we live, and there are not nearly enough plug-in places for EVs, uh, in this part of town. So I'm delighted to see that there will be some additional plug, charging stations there. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any, um, other callers?
No additional calls, Mayor.
All right, then, I will close the public hearing. Uh, councilmember Salinas, do you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, you know, I, um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Anderson and, uh, Ms. Lopez for coming out and, uh, joining us, uh, this evening. I, uh, also want to thank staff for, uh, bringing, uh, you know, giving us the report, I appreciate that, and, uh, also wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Kelly for his, uh, comments regarding the, um, uh, the Caltrans, uh, expansion, uh, project. Um, but I'll tell you, I'm, uh, you know, I read, I read the staff report and, you know, I looked at, um, the reports, the attached reports, and I'm simply, uh, not convinced. Um, you know, I know, I, I know there's a, you know, most of the gas stations in Hayward are along, you know, uh, A Street, um, Harder, uh, Jackson, Tennyson, and I know these are the main corridors to the freeway, but, you know, these corridors are just, um, they're just oversaturated with gas stations, and I, uh, and I guess I'm, I'm just not convinced, uh, of the negative impact of yet another gas station, uh, on, on A Street. Um, and, and I do know that the gas stations, uh, on A Street are owned by, um, you know, by, uh, small business people, uh, there might be, you know, there might be one gas, there might be a couple of gas stations that are owned by larger companies, but, um, you know, these are, you know, local, um, if they don't live in Hayward, they live in the area, uh, owners of these gas stations, and, you know, um, the, the impact, the negative impact it'll have on the other gas stations, uh, I'm, um, that's what I'm, uh, mostly afraid of. But I'll tell you, the one, um, the one issue that I just can't resolve is, um, the, the negative impact on traffic. Uh, that is a, an incredible corner. You have Santa Clara, you have Hathaway, A Street, uh, uh, freeway traffic, um, you know, and, and for somebody who lives along that corridor, um, that, uh, that corridor gets, uh, packed first thing in the morning up until about, you know, 2 o'clock, 1 o'clock, uh, and then, uh, it resumes back at about 3:30, 4 o'clock till about 7 o'clock. And, um, and it's even worse during the winter time. And the amount of traffic already is, you know, is incredible, and I just, and, you know, I'm just not convinced, uh, about, um, the minimum impact that it'll have on traffic on that corridor. So, um, with those comments, uh, I'm going to move that we, uh, not accept and reject, uh, the recommendation by staff, and, um, and the project is stayed.
All right. Is there a second to that? That basically motion to deny the, um, approval, um, modification and the project in general. Um, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right, um, so, um, meant by councilmember Salinas, seconded by councilmember Landon to deny the project. I'll let you do, would you like to speak on that, council? Um, you know, I see that, uh, our economic development manager has his hand up, so, Mr. Nguyen, did you wish to say something?
I, I did. I had a, um, uh, point of, uh, information for councilmember Salinas regarding, um, the, the concept of the potential negative impact on existing gas stations on A Street as a result of, uh, Costco Gas, um, project moving forward. And, you know, I just want to make sure there's, there's a strong distinction between the business model that Costco Gas is proposing at the Hathaway location as opposed to the, the gas stations on A Street. Uh, all of those gases on A Street offer a wide range of, of services and different products. So, you know, your normal gas station, you get your Lotto tickets, your convenience, your sodas, and things like that, but a number of them also add value in terms of small checks and oil changes and things like that, so their, their service offering is quite different, and, uh, and that's how they add value to their business. So, um, you know, staff did review the, uh, the market analysis and found it to be adequate and, and, uh, correct, and, um, it is consistent with our discussions with, uh, our economic development peers in other cities that have had Costco Gas, um, enter their market. So I just wanted to make that point of, um, information available to you, councilmember. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Nguyen, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Does that change your assessment in any way, or is you, you wish your motion to stand as it was made?
Uh, my motion stands.
Okay, and the second as well?
It does, and I'd like to speak to it whenever is the right time.
You can go ahead and speak now, councilmember Landon.
Okay, were you done, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Thank you, councilmember Salinas, and thank you, Mayor. Um, and many, many thanks to, to our city staff. I, um, absolutely appreciate the expertise that all of you brought to the table and in working with the applicant, which is something we always ask to be done, and, um, you know, heard when I met with the applicant, um, a number of months ago, heard great things about, um, the work of city staff. So all of that, um, I deeply appreciate. That, um, is without question. What is for question for me is, I'm very concerned that the, the existing Hayward station and the San Leandro station were not considered in the traffic and financial studies, um, and therefore I don't think we quite have as big a picture or clearer picture as needed. Um, I concur with councilmember Salinas about the impact of this, um, intersection from a traffic standpoint. I also heard from, I mean, we all heard from one of the business owners in the area. I also heard from a gas station owner on the other side of town who saw a 25% decrease in his sales as a result of the Costco gas station in South Hayward. Um, and he is along Tennyson Boulevard, so it's not even like it was right as close as these are on A Street. Um, I don't think the business model is different enough to, um, justify the leaving out of those markets, and I also fundamentally don't think we need to be applying more, um, gas stations. We are trying to push for greener economy, um, greener models, and I urge Costco to look at doing what the, the, um, gas station down the street was and invested in hydrogen. Um, this still may not be the right spot for that, but the idea of putting more, um, fossil fuel tanks in the ground, um, which is a permanent kind of thing, it'll have to be mitigated someday if there, if we are successful in moving away from fossil fuel, um, this just doesn't seem like an infrastructure we need. And on top of that, in this area, as has already been pointed out, there's already a lot of that infrastructure. So while the sales tax is of course appealing and the expertise of our, um, staff is, is fantastic, um, I just don't see the need for this, um, gas station, and so therefore I'm happy to support the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers Armando. Um, wait a minute, wait a minute, councilmembers Armando. Um, Mr. Martinez, did you have something to add?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to quickly, um, call on transportation manager Fred Kelly, just to kind of educate the council in terms of what the process is, um, when we receive a traffic impact analysis and how we kind of, um, work with the applicants, um, traffic consultants to develop a really appropriate scope and really conservative scope when we're really doing these analyses, so we can really anticipate the worst-case scenario and really ensure that when we're doing these analyses, they're really comprehensive. So, um, Mr. Kelly, if you are on the phone, uh, would you mind speaking to that?
Sure, I'm still here. Um, what we do is to work hand in hand with the, um, consultant's transportation, uh, consultant. We provide and we, uh, sign off on the ultimate scope, so no work is done prior to us agreeing to the assumptions and methodology, um, included in the proposed, uh, scope of work. And then once that's done, um, and a study is prepared or a draft study is prepared, we then, um, review that study to make sure that it is in line with, uh, the scope of work and that there are no errors and that it complies with all either city of Hayward, uh, regulations and guidelines and/or SEQA guidelines. So that was done in this case, and in all cases, we do look to the worst-case scenario. Um, I, I, I do want to address a question that came up about A Street, and so I'm going to be quite clear that I'm not here tonight to say that, boy, it's great on A Street, uh, near that location of Hathaway. It's problematic. And it's one of those situations where you have an existing situation that's problematic, and that a new development comes in, and that new development then is sort of looked at to fix the problem, uh, in its entirety. And, and unfortunately, that's, um, not the way that it works, uh, from a SEQA standpoint. Uh, they fix, they are, um, charged with fixing the problem that, or the issues that they create, but not existing conflicts. So there is existing, uh, uh, deficiency in left-turn capacity, uh, eastbound to, uh, Hathaway, I'm sorry, eastbound A Street to Hathaway. Uh, that's a given, and this project will add to that. However, there are some short-term and near-term, um, solutions to mitigate that to some extent. Will it eliminate it? Absolutely not. Will it mitigate it? Yes. So there are some things that we can work with the developer to do, again, in the short term, prior to the 880 and, uh, the 880 and A Street project, uh, being constructed, which will, again, we can, we can, um, design it such that it adds even more benefit for local road improvements than what we would do in the short term. So just wanted to throw that out there so the council was aware. Yeah, and I just want to, let me just, um, comment, I don't, uh, think staff didn't do their homework, and I don't think, uh, staff, uh, didn't do a good job. Um, uh, I'm just not convinced, so that's it.
Councilmember Salinas, just, uh, one additional comment, understanding that traffic was going to be kind of the perceived impact of this project, we also did commission a third-party peer review of their traffic analysis by our own, our own SEQA consultant, LSA, and they did, they did deem that the conclusions that came out of the consultant's traffic impact analysis were adequate and were, were solid. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all, and now we will go to the patiently waiting councilmembers Armando.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, for various reasons, I will not be supported, supporting the motion. Uh, in my mind, it's a good idea to help a, a business that has been in our community, what, since 19, before 1990. Um, I have heard from, uh, local business owners who appreciate the fact that they can now shop for their business and then also, um, buy gasoline there, so that's a good one. I, I agree with Paul that our more traditional, uh, gasoline stations kind of have a different clientele, where you can buy your Lotto ticket and your Dr. Pepper, whatnot. The traffic mitigation, the traffic mitigation will, will take place, so I think, yes, while that corner is a heavily trafficked one because Metro Taquero is right, right 100 feet from it, um, so that's, uh, that's one. Uh, I, I like the fact that, and this has happened with, with some other businesses where they are refused their first, um, application, and then we tell them, well, in order for you to be approved, you'll have to, you should do these things, you should consider these things. And in my mind, they've gone way beyond what was, uh, requested of them, uh, from the, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, and I have received a lot more, let's see, I have received two letters, two emails from folks who are against the, the gasoline station at Costco, but a lot more yeses, a lot more kudos as to, it's a good idea, it's a good improvement to that particular center. Um, so because of those reasons, I will not be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm conflicted on this item. Um, I definitely don't want to create more dependency on fossil fuels. We have our climate action plan. We were just in a work session last week on how much, how difficult it is to, um, meet the goals of that plan, given some upcoming changes with East Bay Clean Energy. Um, however, Costco has been, um, an instrumental partner in the city of Hayward. They're a good employer. Um, I know many, many businesses in Hayward that utilize the business center. Um, it is a unique situation because of the membership. It's, it's not one that everyone is going to be utilizing. I'm also very worried about, um, our revenues in the city of Hayward and taxes being down, and, um, it is our responsibility to try to increase revenue in the city of Hayward and, um, encourage investment. So, um, with reservation, I will not support the motion. However, um, I'm not sure where this is going to land yet, but I also don't want to see any more applications for gas stations. I think, um, we need to put a moratorium after this vote, if it does move forward, and I don't want to see applications come before the city, um, for at least eight to 10 years or indefinite, but I just have some serious reservations, but also, um, I'm in support. But I just have some serious reservations, but also I'm in support at this point of the project moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wahab.
Thank you. I have some clarifying questions just because I, you know, the motion, usually we approve it and then, you know, people either support it or not. So I just wanted to ask, as this is moving towards denial, potentially, I wanted to ask, if this were to be denied, is Costco able to come and make arrangements to adjust their model, to answer some of the questions? I do believe a lot of the questions are completely pertinent to the issue, the location. I also live on the A Street corridor. I can concur about traffic. That was like the primary concern that I had. And what is the option available to Costco at this point? If this were to pass, I just want to highlight.
Are you asking if the motion is to pass, which is denial of the project?
Yeah. Okay. Overall, if this project were to be denied, what is the option for Costco?
Okay. Staff, Mr. Martinez, or?
Yes, the options would be that the project would be denied and Costco could either walk away or within a year of the denial date, so a year of tonight, they can reapply for a new application. Those would be two.
Within a year for no? Within a year?
In a year. So 365 days from tonight.
Exactly. Wait a year to apply again. Okay.
So can I ask, why do we have that 365? It's a very arbitrary number and, you know, if they're able to move swiftly on, let's say in three months, adjust the plan, address traffic, street improvements, so forth, with environmental concerns as a forefront as well, why can they not come back to the city within three months? It's not very business friendly.
I believe if that is the direction of the council and I would, I might call on our city attorney to correct, is that the council should probably continue the item to a date uncertain, giving the applicant the opportunity to make those adjustments. However, I'm a little bit cautious with respect to like fixing issues related to traffic, particularly because the conclusion out of the traffic impact analysis was that there would be a less than significant impact. So technically, there are no, there are no impacts to address or to mitigate.
Okay. And I want to understand the limited impact to current traffic, meaning that area is already so impacted that whether Costco has a gas station or not, there's limited impact? Is that what I'm understanding?
Fred, I'm going to call on Transportation Manager Fred, as well as, I am accompanied by Teresa Wallace and Matthew Wiswell from LSA, our SEQA consultant, that are a little bit more familiar with SEQA thresholds and kind of what is a determining factor between a less than significant impact or a significant impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Marcus, I'll let LSA go first and see if they addressed the question adequately.
Good evening. Matthew Wiswell of LSA here. To put it simply, the city has thresholds of significance for transportation impacts. In this case, it's level of service. So the city has stated, as long as a project doesn't exceed Level of Service E, which is rated on a scale from A to F, as long as it doesn't push it any worse than that, which this project complies with, there wouldn't be a significant impact. So like Marcus stated, because there's not any significant impact, there's no nexus to require a mitigation measure.
Okay, so that is of concern because Councilmember Salinas is absolutely accurate that there is a ridiculous amount of traffic. If one car is slow, it is impacted to, half of A Street is just impacted both ways, for whatever reason. It's one of the worst areas that I've seen in regards to traffic. One of the other concerns I do have is Costco's gas is available to Costco-only members. And it was stated, I think the question was asked, but the response was members and business members, which basically means no average resident who is not paying the membership fee to become a Costco member can purchase the gas, correct?
That is correct.
Is that available, is the gas available to regular residents if we request it?
I would defer that question to Costco themselves.
The facility would only be, would remain open to members only. We do have Costco representatives available to perhaps add some more detail to that, but it's not a practice to open it up to general public without some sort of connection to their membership, mainly just to maintain that level of service to the members who do pay the ongoing fee to get that service.
And what is the fee?
Depends on the level of membership. Off the top of my head, I don't have those numbers available.
Okay, I'm a Costco member. I know it's roughly $50 or more. I do want to ask, the electronic charging station, is that available? I'm trying to just figure out how that would be connected to your membership because it's usually, you know, you have a different type of membership with a different company. So I want to understand how the EVs are set up.
EVs would be installed for the use of Costco members. So business representatives or members that would be shopping at the Business Center.
Okay. And is this Business Center, is this gas station potentially going to add more jobs?
Potentially, in the long run, if the, you know, the level of service at this facility continues to draw member demand. Initially, there will be some additional training provided to employees at the facility because they do always have trained attendants at the site to assist with a number of tasks throughout the day. So at a very minimum, it certainly does provide training, upscaling opportunities to employees at the Business Center.
Is this a unionized Costco?
No.
Okay. However, you do provide a living wage and so forth, correct? That's what Costco is pretty much known for, right?
Yeah, correct. Living wage, health benefits, very well, very good training with their employees as well.
Okay. And to our city staff, on average, let's say if we were to go through with approving a gas station at this location, what type of revenue within one year would we see to
I don't have the number offhand and in general, we don't share direct sales tax generation estimates by business type because of confidentiality.
Okay, so I remember reading the staff report that something about 24%. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that then?
Something of 24%?
Yes, in the staff report, and let me pull it up real quick. And if you guys want to click Control, Find and do it for me. Okay, so I can't seem to find it and it's 10 pages, so I won't go into the details. But rough range, what is the, how beneficial is this to the city?
From an economic development perspective, it is, it is, it is an important project in the city, not only for the direct sales tax generation from the fueling station itself, there is also the induced sales tax generation from adding a new amenity to an existing Costco center.
Property tax.
Existing customers at that center, that center, yeah, additional sales tax generated by sales, formed by goods and we will receive sales tax on those goods. And then thirdly, the investment Costco is proposing also helps solidify them at that location for the foreseeable future. The amount of infrastructure they have to put in, you know, will keep them there.
Okay. And if I can speak to the Costco representative, I'm just waiting for them to pop up on the
Go ahead and ask your question.
They'll pop up when they start talking.
So one of the concerns that I have is that whether this passes or doesn't pass, with some of the comments made by colleagues on council, very, very concerning about whether it's the environment, whether it's traffic, whether it's, you know, the benefit to the city and so forth, and a motion on the table with a second, what does Costco want to see if we were to even make, let's say, an amendment or anything like that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So let's say, rather than completely denying it, if we were to open it up for, let's say in three months, you come back with a adjusted, you know, proposal, would that be viable for you or no?
I guess we would need to have a better sense of what those adjustments are. Again, between the Planning Commission hearing and City Council hearing, we took those comments that we received very seriously, were able to take a closer look at the project's scope and were able to add additional features such as the EV charging stations, as well as to take a closer look and analysis at the items such as economic impact and demand as well as the traffic. So I suppose it would just really depend on, you know, what the specific items are that need closer valuation.
Okay. And I would like to toss this to the motioner. Many of the comments that he's raised, you know, I personally share. So would you be willing to alter it where they make certain adjustments based on what the city council requests?
No, respectfully, Councilmember Wahab, no. My motion stands.
Okay.
And Councilmember Wahab, can I, I just want to interrupt you for a minute because I've seen that Mr. Brick from our city attorney's office has his hand raised and I don't, I'm not sure what he wants to say, but we'll come back to you. But Mr. Brick, did you want to interject something here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify a comment from earlier. If the motion to deny staff's recommendation and the project moving forward, if that carries, then there is a 12-month period in our municipal code whereby Costco could not make this application again. And that's in the municipal code, so we can't shorten that without going through the process to amend the municipal code. So I just wanted to clarify that before it goes further. Thank you.
Okay. I guess she, I think she may have been asking even if we...
So if the council continued the item?
Yeah, that's what we would want to do. Okay, so if that's our direction, that's how we would want to do it, rather than...
And deny it, because if you deny it, then they have to wait a year. But if you continue the item, then it can come back with changes.
All right, thank you.
All right. Councilmembers Armanio, is your hand still up or did you just unraise it?
Just one quick one. I forgot to mention that in my mind, this will be the last gas station that we approve in the City of Hayward. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
You know, that, I know that Councilmember Marquez said she was very conflicted about this. I'm not exactly sure how Councilmember Wahab is going to vote, but she also seems to, you know, certainly have some questions. We have two. We have a motion and a second to deny the project. We have a council member who is supporting the project. We have a council member who is absent. So my inclination at this point is probably to, because I, you know, I have to say that there were two different planning, references to the Planning Commission seeing this prior to this last time. They occurred back in 1999 and 2002. I was a member of the Planning Commission at both those times and I, that's why I requested the minutes from the city clerk, and I think you all got copies and I don't know whether you looked, but actually, I voted against approval of the project. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I voted against a motion to deny the project in 1999. And I can't tell you now what my thinking along those lines was 20 years ago to do that. It seems that in 2002, I, I think that I voted to deny the project along with the Planning Commission majority at that time. So, and again, I don't really remember my thinking about. I know that in general, I think some good points have been made about, we are trying to move away from a car-oriented society, so I don't think we need more gas stations. However, Costco is a very important part of our business community here, a very big contributor to our sales tax base. Not that that's necessarily a reason to approve this project, but, you know, I do appreciate that they took the comments of the Planning Commission very seriously and came back and tried to rectify to some extent what the Planning Commission found missing and have added charging stations which are needed and which I would definitely not approve the project without. So, well, we can, we can take the vote and see how it goes, but, you know, if the, we have six members here tonight, it is very possible this vote could come out 3-3, in which case, in which case the city attorney can help me out, but I think that that would mean that the project was not approved and therefore denied.
Hi, this is Mayor, this is Joe Brick. Yes, that would be correct if it's tied 3-3.
And so based on what I'm hearing from a number of council members, it might be a good idea if we, if we did agree as a council to ask that this application be continued and presumably, we will have our seventh member back at the date that it's continued to. And it would give us all probably more time to, you know, to get all of our questions answered and maybe get a sense from the community. We had one speaker, one public speaker who favored the project tonight. So with that, Councilmember Wahab, did you want to add anything? I thought I heard you.
No, I was on mute.
Okay. So with that, at this point, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion and we'll see where we go.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just a point of clarification. I think my answer was a little misleading. If the motion that's pending, it doesn't carry, then the floor would be open for a new motion.
For a new motion. Which could be, which could be to continue the project.
Correct.
To the fall. All right.
Mayor, do you by any chance want to ask Councilmembers Salinas and Lamnan if they just want to continue it, if that is your concern?
Councilmember Salinas, would you be willing to, I guess that would mean withdrawing your motion and recommending that the project be continued?
When will, when will Councilmember Mendel be back?
Well, I think before fall, when we would next have a meeting, because this is our last meeting before our break. So our next meeting isn't until September.
September 15th is the next regular business meeting.
So I'll withdraw my motion and I'll, I'll see, then I'll withdraw my motion and then if the seconder is okay with it, I'll remove that we continue this until September, October.
And a secondary, Mr. Lam, Councilmember Lamnan, are you agreeable to that as a, I guess a substitute for the original motion?
So I would ask Councilmember Salinas, do you envision wanting to have a gas station at this location?
Well, it seems, it seems... Well, it seems, it seems that there's, you know, I personally don't want it there, and I don't envision a gas station there, given the reasons why I stated, but, you know, it seems that there's a need amongst both Councilmember Wahab and then perhaps the mayor, for Councilmember Mendel to be part of this discussion, and, you know, I don't mind, you know, we could move the vote, you know, I'm just, if there is such a great need to have Councilmember Mendel part of this discussion, you know, I'm going to vote probably the same then than I am now, I mean, you know, but if it's a courtesy to invite or to include Councilmember Mendel, you know, I will, you know, I'll give that the privilege, you know, I'll extend the privilege to the council, but...
I just want to clear up that I know my vote, I know exactly how I'm going to vote. It's more just because the concern that the mayor had, so just courtesy.
Okay. So, I appreciate the courtesy and the attempt to find consensus, I'm totally on board with that. I also know that we have been trying to give clear communication to businesses, so, you know, if the, if the will of the councils, you know, it could be better, but we don't really want it, then maybe it's kinder to just say that today, and so maybe we have the vote, and then if it fails, we do the other one.
Want to withdraw your withdrawal?
For Lamnan, but, so my motion stands, I move that we deny the application.
All right, then, let's have, let's have our roll call vote, and we'll see how that goes, and then if it, if it does result in, and my concern wasn't so much that it's Councilmember Mendel or any council member, I'm just saying we are down a council member, we could get a split vote, and we're also obviously divided, I mean, two of us haven't exactly declared yet, but the other four have, you know, are split, so 2-2, so it's obviously something that we're struggling with, and maybe we need a little more time, but let's see how it goes.
And just one quick comment, and also, you know, I do agree with everybody regarding the contributions that Costco has had in the city. You know, I'm a Costco member, I've been a Costco member for a very, very long time, my entire family, we own multiple memberships of Costco, but my main, my main concern are the very concerns that have been expressed on, you know, amongst my colleagues right now. I mean, everything from traffic, everything, I mean, we're looking at putting another gas station in town while we're trying to go green, we're, we want, you know, we're, we have a climate action plan, and, I mean, we have, we have all of this, or, you know, sort of 21st century forward-thinking, you know, plans and policies that we're, that we're trying to, that we're trying to act on, and we have a gas station, you know, I mean, it's, and not only that, there's, this is going to be like gas station number seven on A Street, maybe, I think, seven or eight on A Street, and it's, and so, that's, so that's my case.
Goodness, I see hands raised from staff. Ms. Simpson?
Yes, I just had a question, probably for the city attorney. If the project were denied without prejudice, does that allow the applicant to come back in less than a year if they were to choose to make adjustments per the council?
We have done that before, though I would say that that's a possibility, if the council wants to deny it without prejudice, knowing that they could come back within a year. It's a little outside of our municipal code strict reading, but there is precedent for it.
Would we have to make that as part of the motion?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, so, clarifying, though, if you denied it without prejudice, they could come back sooner than a year?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we've done that before, but if it's denied without that clarification, then they have to wait a year before making the same application.
So, to go back to my comment, the revisions to this gas station, to the gas station, it would have to be a spectacular development for, you know, for, for me to change my mind, so I'm going to, my motion stands, and let's move forward.
All right, Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Lamnan.
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez.
No.
Councilmember Salinas.
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab.
This is with prejudice or without?
With.
With.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. My motion stands, but my, yeah, I'm voting yes for my motion. Okay, I just had a, I'm just thinking.
You wrote it the way you wanted to, I think. And Councilmember Wahab, yeah, it doesn't include the without prejudice part, he did not include that in the motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wahab?
No.
Councilmember Armentio?
No.
Mayor Halliday?
I'm going to vote, no, I'm, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait, 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 wait. Voting...
Letting us to deny the motion.
Yeah, that's, that is how, you're right, it is a little confusing. Yes, I will vote no on the motion, so...
Mayor, I like, I don't know...
So, that means, okay, Councilmember Marquez.
I don't know if Councilmember Wahab was going to speak, I think she was trying to get your attention, but I'm ready to make a motion, but I think I'm going to get your attention. Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead and make the, yes, go ahead, I recognize you.
Councilmember Marquez, if you would like to make a motion, I'll leave it to it.
Thank you. So, I'd like to move staff's recommendation, and want to know from our city attorney if I can also add a moratorium on gas stations for at least the next 10 years.
We would have to bring that back to explore moratorium, have a basis to study and the timeline, so...
So, I'd like to staff to look into that further, but for tonight, I will make the motion to approve staff's recommendation, and want to thank the Planning Commission for their detailed and comprehensive work.
That's good.
All right. Does anyone want to speak on this motion? Okay, Councilmember Wahab?
To Councilmember Marquez, I understand you want to approve this, this particular staff report. Do you envision any additional changes that we could potentially ask Costco to come forward with? I do, I do agree that there's a lot of concerns around this. I also believe that Costco can help reinvigorize this particular area, which I will say A Street and specifically even more closer to West A Street, you know, not the best part of our city, and considering that it's right off the exit, can we ask for additional improvements? And that's what I would like you to consider.
I'm open to it, however, I think we need to be very specific on what that asks is. So, are you talking about aesthetics, additional road improvements?
I personally think traffic is a huge concern for me. I would like to see Costco, as well as the city staff, work on a better plan to address that particular concern. The entryway, especially right around that area, is troublesome.
So, I like to ask staff, I know the applicant spoke on basically managing the queue, so could we do a condition, conditions of approval that there has to be a specific number of staff on site, once the count is more than, let's say, I don't know, seven, 10 vehicles in the queue? Are there any additional conditions of approval that we can include at this juncture?
That is possible to include an operational condition of approval. Part of me would be a little bit hesitant to understand a clear number that has a nexus of X amount of vehicles really is when an impact is generated, or when the need for some form of queuing assistance is required. I mean, I think I would like to defer to Kittleson, their traffic consultant, because they manage a database of all Costcos in the nation, to see what that, what that magic number is, as opposed to just pulling out a random number out of the sky of 10 cars in the queue. I understand that there is the perception of congestion when you do go to a Costco gas station, especially at the Hesperian site, but I think there is, there is a number where it is more appropriate to have such an operational condition. Oh, and I'm sorry, I'm zooming in and out. So, I might defer that to Ms. Lopez from Kittleson, if she does have that insight. I'm just a little bit hesitant to do so.
Is there anything that could require, let's say, an analysis six months after they're open, any type of documented impact? So, is there any other additional kind of check-in that we can place at this, at this time?
That may be a possibility. I think it would need to be clear what would be the corrective action if they weren't able to meet, like, a certain queuing, or it did become problematic for both circulation and safety on-site. That might be an option, I believe, like I said. Kittleson, I think, handles all the traffic data for Costco as their primary traffic consultant for the nation, so they do keep a database, probably working to continually make the process more, more efficient, so...
Reports every six months?
Ms. Lopez, is that something that Costco does normally? But I think, I think so. Councilmember Marquez, yes?
Yeah, yes, Amy Lopez here with Kittleson, I'm happy to respond to the questions. Traditionally, when we notice a site has potential for queuing challenges, we will have in advance prepared a queue management plan. This is our most common condition of approval for fuel stations, is to, in addition to the approval, have prepared a queue management plan. And what that means is, it's a plan that my team prepares in concert with Costco, and in particular with the operators, to make clear what the operators would do within the site to manage fuel station queues, and manage them within the site so that they do not spill out onto the local street network and cause adverse effects to local traffic.
So, can you give us just like a number, what does that look like once that additional plan goes into effect?
Sure. Might go right ahead, sorry.
So, if we were on-site and we would see 10, 15, 20 cars in the queue, what does that look like, that additional mitigation?
Sure.
When it's not going to affect?
Yep, so you'll recall earlier when I spoke about the location within the site, that I called the queue storage area, so that area at the, you know, on the page, it was below where the pumps are. That area has a capacity to hold kind of a 32 to 35 vehicles just in that area alone. Additionally, if more than that many vehicles were waiting in queue, we would expect to have up to 11 additional vehicles that could queue in that kind of curved around area that we were motioning to, and then beyond that, there's additional drive aisle space within the site where we could further manage the queue and continue to keep it away from access points on halfway. This is, we've been really successful with this all over the state and in other locations at managing queues and maintaining them on the site so that they're not spilling out onto the local street network, recognizing that some facilities that were built many years ago and have queuing issues, there are other measures that have been put in place there, and at times, that's where Costco has chosen to expand a fuel station to meet the demand of a site. This site is being proposed to be constructed at a scale that is expected to have what I'll refer to as processing power to meet the demand of the site. So, Costco is being proactive and forward-looking in that way to further accommodate the demand that's expected here, and they've also located it on the site in a way that affords us a lot of on-site space to manage queues.
Okay, so I'm satisfied with that response. So, Councilmember Wahab, unless you have another...
I have one.
Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
I'd like to see the, I am not sure why the plan was to have, I think, two charging stations that would accommodate four vehicles with a plan to ultimately possibly have three more that would accommodate, I assume, up to 10 cars? Is that, did I get that right?
That is correct, yes. There would be the, they will, they would run the conduit to have potentially three additional EV charging stations, which would be an additional six parking spaces for EV chargers.
And I, is there any reason, I'll ask the applicant, why those are not all going to be activated immediately?
The initial proposal would be to provide the two active immediately, and then be able to have the flexibility of adding more as demand occurs within the membership base visiting the site, but that's really the main purpose of why we selected the number in terms of installed versus conduits, and it could be flexible in terms of how that actually is delivered initially.
All right, I would like to ask that they put all of them in. I think there is a need for this, it's going to grow, people are more and more wanting to buy electric vehicles, so would that be acceptable, Councilmember Marquez, to add to the motion?
Yes, Mayor.
All right.
Madam Mayor, may I just interject really quickly? One thing that Ms. Lopez did mention with regarding to expanding fuel, existing fuel facilities to accommodate existing demand, for full transparency and to Councilmember Marquez's point to a moratorium, we do actually have an application for the existing Hesperian site to add additional fuel dispensers. I just, I did want to bring that clear, or make that clear to the council, that we do have an application, not for a new gas station, but expanding the one they currently have on the Hesperian site.
Well, that is not the subject of tonight's, but thank you for the clarification, and that's fuel dispensers, not electric charging.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you for adding that in, and that will be considered separately from what we're doing here tonight. All right, let's see, Council, okay, I asked Councilmember Marquez, Councilmembers Armentio, was my request okay with you, too? You seconded the motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Councilmember Salinas, she wanted to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, I, you know, I know the Climate Action Plan is 252 pages long, and, you know, I haven't, I haven't read it so much in detail to find the section on gas stations, but I'm just curious, does anybody know that in the Climate Action Plan, is there anywhere in there that says approve more gas stations?
I'm sure there is not in the Climate Action Plan, anything that says approve more gas stations.
Because, you know, we, you know, on one hand, we're, we have been taking painstaking effort to green the city, and to implement and to adhere to one set of policies, but then, on the other hand, we're taking votes like this that contradict a policy and a document that we've been, not only we've invested a lot of time and energy in, and staff has invested a lot of time and energy in, but, but it's just, it's counter to, basically, you know, a philosophy that we've been trying to work towards. So, while I was tempted to change my vote with the added, with the additions and the tweaks in Councilmember Marquez's motion, while I understand them, and, you know, I would, you know, probably on a different day, probably vote for them, but, you know, I think today, I really have to take a position, because this corridor in particular, unlike any other corridor in the city, and I'm saying that very deliberately, unlike any other corridor in the city, not only are we oversaturated in, not only is it a food desert, but it's also oversaturated in gas stations, and so my, my vote will be a no vote on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that, is there anyone else who would like to comment? Councilmember Wahab?
I don't have any further questions at the moment.
All right, so then I'm going to call for a vote on this. All right. So then I'm going to call for a vote on this, the motion by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Zermeño, to approve the staff recommendation with the addition of, and now, Councilmember Marquez, you withdrew any amendment because you were satisfied with what Costco already does about controlling the queuing, correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. And my motion also included staff direction on analyzing a moratorium on gas stations.
Yes, yes. And Councilmembers Zermeño, you agreed with, to that amendment, right, to add a direction to staff to consider bringing back to us a moratorium on any further gas stations in the city?
Yes, I will not vote for any new gasoline stations in the city of Hayward.
All right. And then both of you agree to my request for expanding to the full three, no, five charging stations accommodating 10 cars as part of the project. So is that a matter of City Clerk? Will you do a roll call vote on this motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lemon?
No.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas?
No.
Councilmember Wahab?
No.
Councilmember Zermeño? Mayor Halliday?
Yes, and I'll say that, so here we now have, this motion has also not, has gone down to defeat, so a three to three vote. So we have done nothing now in this, in this long session that we have had. And I think we are back to, I don't know where we are now. We have defeated both a motion to deny and a motion to approve. This is a really, I appreciate everybody's contributions here. This is a really difficult thing. Councilmember Salinas, your points were very well taken about our general direction and the Climate Action Plan and wanting to, you know, wanting to reduce our emissions. But on the other hand, we are in a crisis right now that is going to severely impact the revenues from many sources to, you know, our city and businesses, you know, need support right now. I think, you know, my hope was that eventually the pumping stations would not be needed because people would not have those cars anymore. They would have all gone to electric. Nevertheless, where are we now? I'll ask Mr. Brick, what are we, where are we at this point? We have defeated both motions.
Right. So the floor is open for a new motion. The one that may make sense, if there can't be any agreement for or against the project, even with modifications, is to continue to a date certain. So Councilmember Mendel can participate.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that is what I would like to ask be done right now. Councilmembers Zermeño, you want to comment?
I move that the item be continued for, what, two months or to September 15th?
I would recommend-
Continue to September 15th.
Yeah, I would recommend September.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. That's my motion.
The September 15th, moving it to September 15th. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Are there any, is there anyone who would like to comment on this motion? I'll be supporting it. All right. Now the City Clerk, call a roll on this motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lemon?
No.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas?
No.
Councilmember Wahab?
No.
Councilmember Zermeño?
Yes.
Mayor Halliday?
Yes. And again, the motion does not pass. Where are we now, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, at this point, since there can't be any decision, then the motion fails and the applicant would have to wait a year before bringing-
Because we didn't approve it.
Right.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if the applicant wants to speak to any proposed changes that would be amendable to or if it's too late for that, but-
I don't think this council is in agreement on what we want to see there, actually. So I'm very sorry, but it appears that we have sort of de facto denied this application. The city attorney doesn't want to dispute that, right? So I think we are going to have to move on to our next item, which is a work session on public safety. First of all, thank you to everyone who came and appeared on behalf of Costco. Sorry we weren't able to come to a more definitive agreement here on this project. So, or at least, you know, I know that when a council member is absent, do we have any rules about automatically bringing it down? I think it's, I mean, that the applicant is entitled to do that if we don't have a full council?
We can double check on those, but I'm not aware of that off the top of my head. But let us look into that, and if that is the case, we will alert the council.
Yeah, I know that we have exercised some rule in the past. It may be when two, two or more council members, you know, more than two shouldn't be absent at any time. But we will, we will have staff check on that and can get back to the applicant about whether they have the right to come back when a full council is present. That might be a possibility. All right. So we're going to move on to item number 10, which is Public Safety Community Engagement Plan Review and Provide Feedback on the Proposed Public Safety Community Engagement Plan.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will give a brief overview of the information that was presented in the staff report to council. I'm joined by our police chief, Tony Chaplin, Captain Brian Matthews, and a number of members from the staff team who have worked on this, Laurel James from the City Manager's Office, Mary Thomas from the City Manager's Office, and Nick Mullins from Finance, who are all here to answer questions, and Chuck Finney, sorry, from the City Manager's Office as well. And we are all available to answer questions. So I will just walk quickly through the presentation on the framework for a proposed community engagement process around public safety in Hayward and the Police Department budget. This is consistent with the direction that the council gave staff during the fiscal year 2021 budget adoption process. While we've presented a fairly detailed plan in the staff report, we do anticipate that this plan may evolve as we embark on these community conversations and as we learn more about community sentiments regarding public safety and police services. And a key priority throughout this process will be to ensure that the voices of those most impacted by public safety policies and programs in the Hayward community, namely people of color in our community, are included and heard in these discussions. The community engagement framework consists of three categories of activities. The first is an independently conducted focus group and survey. The second would be a series of community conversations. And the third would be communication and information sharing. I want to walk briefly through each of these elements. Before I do that, I want to just take a moment to reiterate the purpose statements that we outlined in the staff report for this overarching work. The first is to listen and respond to community members' concerns about policing and public safety in Hayward, and in particular, the ways in which city policies and practices may be disproportionately impacting communities of color in Hayward. We want to have a broader conversation about public safety issues to create a shared understanding of what public safety means for the Hayward community and to begin to brainstorm some potential policy options for realizing that vision. We want to cultivate and strengthen critical relationships between community members, the Police Department Community Advisory Panel, the Hayward Police Department, and other city staff. And we want to relay information to council about community priorities for public safety as identified during the engagement process. And we want to, oh, sorry, that sentence was cut off there. So we want to relay information to council about community priorities for public safety identified during the engagement process, experiences shared relating to policing in Hayward, and recommendations and policy options identified centered around racial equity to achieve public safety for all Hayward community members. So those were the purpose statements that we had outlined. First, I want to talk a little bit about the focus group and survey. For this element of the plan, we would propose to contract with FM3, which is an opinion research firm that has previously worked with the city on our biennial resident satisfaction survey. The focus group would take place in a virtual message board format, given our current restrictions with the pandemic, and would include 30 participants from different parts of the Hayward community, including individuals from different neighborhoods, belonging to different racial and ethnic groups of different genders and sexual orientations, and community members with disabilities, visible and invisible. The purpose of the focus group is to elicit stories and experiences that participants may share in common or that may be held in common with other members of the Hayward community. In addition, these focus groups responses will help shape the wording of questions administered in the survey. FM3 would then administer a 15-minute survey to a representative sample of 400 Hayward residents. This would include both registered voters and also residents who are not registered to vote. And they would use the questions created based on focus group conversations and other input from a variety of sources. These responses will then be weighted to reflect the demographic makeup of the Hayward community. The responses will also be geographically coded so we can understand if certain areas of our community are having different experiences and how to direct further outreach in those areas. I want to emphasize that regardless of the results of the survey, if the data shows that even a small portion of our residents have had negative experiences with the Hayward Police Department, we need to address these concerns, as we would if there were concerns with any study service, obviously acknowledging, of course, the much more significant and potentially detrimental outcomes that could arise from interactions with the Police Department. In addition to administering this survey to gather more community-wide data, we intend to work, the second element of this plan, with the Community Advisory Panel, faith-based organizations, neighborhood groups, and community-based organizations, particularly those serving and working with people of color in Hayward, to host virtual community conversations about public safety and experiences with policing. These conversations will also ask aspirational questions about the community's vision for successful and inclusive safety. In doing so, we seek to involve a broad representation of the community, both demographically and geographically. We hope to have at least 10 of the initial conversations be neighborhood-based, and the other 10 to intentionally involve communities that have typically disproportionately experienced negative interactions with the police. Staff will provide options for Spanish speakers and will work with community-based organizations and community members to tailor the structure of each conversation so that it is accessible to participants. Part of the community conversation element of this plan will also include community conversations with staff within our Police Department to ensure that we hear from their voices and, you know, particularly those who are Hayward residents as well as city staff members. And so we intend to engage internally as well during that piece of the conversation. And lastly, we are going to work to build a web portal and other ways to share information about current policing practices, policies, and programs with the community. We have a draft of this web portal ready, and we should be launching it in the next few days, and it will be prominent on both the City Manager's Office and Police Department web pages and accessible. So in terms of a timeline for this work, staff proposes that the communication and information sharing will be ongoing. We'll propose to conduct the focus group starting in early August. Obviously, this timeline is based on council giving the go-ahead for the plan this evening. We would develop the community conversations format in early August. We would begin the community conversations in August. The survey would be conducted the first week of September. We would present the results of the survey to council in late September and then present a status update on the community engagement to council along with some potential policy options for consideration by late October. Our goals for the council work session tonight are to hear from the community about this outreach plan through the public comment period, to receive council feedback on the plan, and to receive any other council suggestions and ideas before we move forward in this process. So with that, I will stop my presentation and we'll turn it back over to the mayor.
All right. This is a work session item, so I'm going to go first to public comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have speakers on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do. I'm going to go ahead and start transferring them. One moment, please. Please go ahead. You're on the air.
Oh, hello.
I'm sorry, am I in? Yes, you're on.
Yes, and if you could say your name, let us know your name, too, please.
Hello, good evening. This is Lacy Amade. I am a candidate for Hayward City Council and a member of the Hayward Community Coalition. So I read the poll sample and I have an understanding of the contours of the community engagement plan. And indeed, it's a faithful execution of the direction that you all gave them within your power as council members. And I want to comment to that because clearly, the direction you gave to them was totally turning your back on what the community was demanding, what the Hayward Community Coalition and what the wider Black Lives Movement Matter was demanding. So I don't have a long comment because I think what I wanted to say, I already said in June during the budget talks, and it wasn't just me, dozens of other people who called into the budget talks, and that is the people who called in, the hundreds of people on Hayward who took to the streets to make demands that we invest in our neglected communities and use money from the police to fund that. And that is the people on the streets of Hayward, but the hundreds of thousands of people around the country that have been in the streets and that are still in the streets demanding that we address systemic racism in our traditional policing system. So the whole thing that we witnessed, you know, that whole uprising and historic multilateralism, it's not about asking if we need to address racism in our policing or if we need to be reallocating police funds to invest in our community. The question is how. And what you're kicking off with, the direction that you all took, you know, keeping in mind that you all, as mayors and council members, not the federal government, not the state government, you are on the front line with an enormous responsibility, and you have advocated that. The direction you gave to staff to come up with this engagement plan reflects nothing of what this entire nation is asking for. They're not, you're taking us backwards, wherein you're asking if we need to be addressing this, if we need to be doing what the entire community is clamoring for. We are already talking about how. That's all I have to say. I think we've been making it clear. I want to make clear that your communication plan has nothing to do with what the community was asking for, which is a fraction of what the entire movement around the nation was asking for.
Thank you.
So thank you, and I will see you all again very soon. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, next caller, please.
Please go ahead. You're on the air.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Alicia Crater. I'm a lifelong resident, candidate for Hayward City Council, and a member of the Hayward Community Coalition. I'm calling in to share my thoughts on what community engagement should look like regarding policing and the budget. I just want to say that I think there's no need to hire consultants. You are local representatives, and we, the community, are your consultants. I think you all should stop dilly-dallying and just get straight to meeting demands and representing us like we elected you to do. So please just defund the police and put the community in charge of guiding the budget decisions through a citywide committee for all residents. I'll keep it short today, and I'll leave it at that, and I will see you all soon.
Thank you. Next caller?
Please go ahead. You're on the air.
Good evening. My name is Allison Morrison. I'm a previous resident and a current co-land owner and property manager for several units located in downtown Hayward. I'm in support of the Public Safety Community Engagement Plan for several reasons. Due to COVID-19 stay-at-home orders, several of our tenants have not been able to open their businesses. Although this order is to provide the health and safety of residents, it is also causing undue harm by an increased amount of crime on empty storefronts. In fact, there have been empty buildings, housing, criminal behavior prior to the pandemic. An example of an empty building is on A and Second Street. Public urination, drug use, and destruction to the environment have been reported on the premises. I'm hopeful that the Public Safety Community Engagement Plan will address extended vacancies within the city limits. According to evidence matters, research links foreclosed vacant and abandoned properties with reduced property values, increased crime, increased risk to public health and welfare, increased costs for municipal government. Possible repurposes could include public parks or maybe even garden areas. I'm also a strong advocate for a solid- I'm also a strong advocate for a solid police force. Hayward police have been attentive and responsive to pass calls to our property. The police should not be defunded, but rather some funds to be used for racial education, de-escalation training for psychiatric issues, especially within the homeless community. I'm politely requesting increased patrol in our downtown area to reduce criminal behavior. In closing, I'd like to privately thank Councilman Mark Sreda and Sergeant Sally Malone for taking the time and listening to our local concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Nunes. I am calling on behalf of the Hayward Community Coalition. I'm calling to say, as we've stated over and over, our Black and Brown communities are disproportionately affected by the harms of policing. Black and Brown folks need to be the leading and guiding factor in the decision-making on this. Y'all need to offer therapy for the participants, both past and present, if you're going to ask them to relive and open up wounds for trauma, just for the sake of the community. This is the least that you could do for these folks that are going to be doing, expressing and reliving this trauma. Data collection doesn't reflect actual lived experiences, and the firm you're hiring to do this isn't even necessary. FM3 is actually a majority-white research firm, which is concerning, considering our main focus is the Black and Brown communities, and how can we expect to get accuracy if we're not asking people in these communities what's happening to them and how we can fix it? Instead, you need to listen to the community, listen to what they're telling you, and stop cutting people off. You need to allow people to use their voices to tell their stories, while not allowing such a small timeframe and limiting their voices to just two minutes. We really hope you'll actually take our points into account, finally. We're tired of coming to you, repeating ourselves over and over, and we will see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth. I'm a lifelong Hayward community member and voter. In alignment with what City Manager Kelly just shared, you need to actually practice listening. We have been incredibly honest and persistent in our demands about reimagining public safety to prioritize community needs. I am personally not interested in these rushes to create task forces or surveys, instead of actually listening to our voices right now and what we've been saying. We have zero interest in cultivating relationships with police as a plan for public safety. I'm also concerned about this timeline that you're proposing. I genuinely wish you would all rise to the issues that are directly impacting our communities of color, specifically police violence, as the actual pandemic that it is. It's honestly disgusting that we're still negotiating whether this is even an issue. It's a slap in the face as we continue to experience violence and murder towards our Black and Brown people. If you decide to go forward with these focus groups and surveys, I'm curious how you're going to support the people of color that you are re-traumatizing. Defund HPD, this is costing us lives, and the longer that you put this off for your own fear or lack of education around the legacy of abolition as the key to public safety, it's a direct danger to our lives. As a student, I take immense pride in my education, and I thought I'd let you know that Campaign Zero has rated HPD with an F. That is absolutely embarrassing. This is not a question about whether we have an issue, it's about how the hell you're going to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hello, my name is Rosaura Figueroa-Mendosa, and I just want to acknowledge that I'm exhausted. You know, I think, like a lot of us, aside from having a day job, I try to keep balance in my personal life while also building a business and being a daughter of elder Hayward homeowners. So I mention all of this to let you know that when I call in, it's on my own time on a volunteer basis, and I've been waiting to comment for like two hours. So I'm just a regular community member, along with other folks, that are seriously challenging a well-funded system in terms of city staff, Hayward Police Department, and this is money that comes from us, the community, right? So I just want to highlight the extreme imbalance there is in wanting to create radical policy change that reflects the needs of the community members at the bottom of the pyramid, and I'm talking about poor, undocumented, or immigrant, Black, Indigenous, people of color, which, incidentally, these are the people that happen in the neighborhoods where police are disproportionately centered. And so I understand the city has proposed to hire a consulting firm to host, you know, focus groups, and the intent is to collect data from the people and listen to the community, but I really feel like, you know, based on the thoughts from the Hayward Community Coalition, you know, again, Black and Brown people are grossly and adversely affected by the harms of policing, and so they need to be guiding the decisions. You know, two, the participants, past and future, they need to be offered payment and therapy for their emotional labor. If they're being asked to relive traumas of policing for the sake of city outreach. And three, lived experiences are valid, right? The experience of Cynthia Nunes and her family, Augustine Gonzalez. So there's no need to hire a consulting firm, that seventy-four thousand dollars can be used to uplift and support the voices that have already lost loved ones to police violence, so that it doesn't happen again, like the family of Alguí González and Stoney Ramirez. So instead, we call on the city and the council to acknowledge the extensive public comments, emails, and protests in Hayward that have called on investing in Hayward, in the Hayward we need, basically, and away from the bloated police budget. Public safety is more than funding solely police.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, we'll see you soon. Think of us fondly, September fifteenth.
Next caller, please.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, this is Jordan Leopold, Hayward native here, and I'm very confused as to why we're having this consulting firm come in and do data analysis on the issues. There's no question about what the issues are. The community has spoken very clearly about what we want, and issues that families and other community members are facing. Thousands of people have taken to the streets and blocked traffic, standing in solidarity on defunding the police and investing that money back into our community, back into our education, back into our kids. So I think it's honestly a slap in the face, when last month, we were told that we were going to have dialogue with city council, but in turn, you turn to this consulting firm, who is made of all white people, and it's historically known that when a city, when a police department wants to make themselves look good, they use a third-party consultant to fluff the numbers. This is a fact, this is not a joke. And so it's extremely disrespectful that you're taking this route. We are all available, we come in every meeting saying the same things, we're in front of you, we're speaking to the community. Last night, we had a community forum, which was centered around students and parents, and we had white supremacist come in, making racist remarks, threatening to lynch me, a Black man here in Hayward. And this is the reason why we're fighting for this, because our people are being oppressed, we face the brunt of brutalization from the police, and now our community, others within our community are coming out and standing on that side. So right now, you need to take a hard look at yourselves, and cut the BS, work with the community, work with the Hayward Community Coalition, to engage in the community and not allow a consultant to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, and I am, I think we are all very sorry about what happened at that, I think it was an independent forum last evening, but, and I don't know if you heard earlier in the evening that the city manager has said an investigation is underway into those comments, and we will attempt to identify the person who made them. Madam City Clerk, next caller, please.
Could you please mute your device?
It's muted, I have a headphone.
Okay, thank you. Now please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hello, my name is Daniel Super. I want to take a moment to say thank you to Mayor Halliday for your touching letter about my mother that I received recently, who passed away. I'm a lifelong Hayward resident, and I don't think we need a consulting firm to tell us that policing is broken in America. It's, as was mentioned earlier, Project Zero gave Hayward an F in police accountability, and those, sorry, I, and so, it really turns down to, like, justice doesn't require, a, justice doesn't require, it requires action, not getting feedback from a third-party consulting firm. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, my name is Aklin, and I'm calling regarding the current proposal to hire a consulting firm to host focus groups with select members of the community. It's ridiculous that it's even being proposed when countless of calls are being made from people all throughout Hayward into these meetings and sent directly into your inboxes, all demanding that you reduce the police budget and remove HPD from our schools. All this proposal says to us is that instead of just listening to your constituents, you would rather hire an outside party to do it for you. What we've been calling for is simple, stop spending so much on HPD, and instead, put that money into our schools, put it into programs that nurture our community, not criminalize it. Along with being fully opposed to the hiring of a consulting firm because it's an unnecessary expense that's going to end up falling on Hayward residents, I personally don't trust the methods that this firm will use to collect and then present the data that it would be seeking, just based off of how deflactive and manipulative various council members and city leaders have been toward the public as of late, and how much they've done to demean the demands of the people of Hayward that have actively been calling in, sharing extremely personal and traumatic negative experiences they and their loved ones have had with the police. Don't use our tax dollars to pay other people to listen for you, just listen to us like you're paid to do.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Okay, thank you all. My name is Vanessa Sadsad, as many of you already know, community activist organizer right here. I'd like to reiterate the many sentiments of the folks who spoke previously, in particular, the supporter of the police, but of this current agenda item, and I'd like to mention something that they spoke on. Police are meant to protect property and property only. Right now, we need to be focusing on the needs and the will of the residents, and that has been calling for community engagement and the absence of a consulting firm. So it doesn't matter if these institutions are the ivory tower or are local elected, right? So every single listening session, task force, community advisory panel, and now, a consulting firm coming in to do exactly what the same thing, while stifling existing voices and erasing the work that your community has already been doing, which is tremendously insulting to even throw a seventy-four K price tag at it. What are you hoping to do with this timeline? I truly ask, to what hope that we all get burnt out? This is not a moment, this is definitely a movement. And so I leave you with this from Audrey Lord. For the master's tools, we'll never dismantle the master's house. They may allow us to temporarily, to beat him at his home game, but they will never enable us to bring about genuine change. And this act is only threatening to those women who still define the master's house as their only source of support. So right now, continuously thinking that we are here to make amends with the police or speak to the police, or have cop propaganda in your Hayward Unified Town Hall to speak as to why we need SORO's in any of our communities, is unfathomable. You and me all need to be speaking to and within the community with a community of support. You see this in Oakland, you see this in San Francisco. Why? Because they are in collaboration with what? Rossa Group, with Hayward Community Coalition. You need to be doing that work and not hiring someone else to do it.
Thank you, thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, my name is Arthavia Berry. I am a Black woman, resident of Hayward, and also serve on the Community Services Commission for the City of Hayward. On May twenty-fifth, George Floyd's death rocked the nation. We are two months away from that, and our city has yet to take any definitive action, and I'm disappointed in the plan that I looked at tonight, as it does not state any definitive outcomes with any acceptable timeline on those outcomes. The City of Hayward spends nearly fifty percent of its budget, almost eighty million dollars a year, on the police department. But yet, we can't figure out how to fund mental health services and other wraparound support services to relieve our police from responding to drug addiction, mental health, which they should not be responding to. I'm so disappointed. I am not in support of yet another survey for another three months, when we have the Community Services Commission, who has provided recommendations, we have a task force appointed, advisory council for the police, that can make recommendations. I just do not understand the thinking that my community can wait another three months while our men and women and children continue to die in the streets. I urge this council to review the recommendations from the Community Services Commission, along with immediate actions that can be taken tonight to demonstrate your commitment to our community and to stopping the violence against Black and Brown people, and to begin to reinvest in our people. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, my name is Lily, resident of Hayward for twenty-five years. I'm not for the consulting firm you're proposing. I want to point out and thank the Hayward Coalition, which has already done what you're proposing and have given abundant amount of information on this matter, not to mention the protests and cries from the residents about the injustices their children and families undergo. This is just to divert and prolong from actual action, that is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hello, my name is Yanifero Orihiedmandes, a Hayward native and Hayward School District alumna. I'm calling to request for the council to defund the Hayward police, while defunding the police, I ask for the council to reallocate the resources to the community needs by adding more social counseling services in our schools. I demand for the council not to use any of our tax dollars to hire a consulting firm to gather any more data for which the community is already calling in and showing up to protest to share our input. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Pastor Arlene Nearing, I'm calling from Eden United Church of Christ in Hayward. My church is located in the unincorporated area, but we serve all of the Eden area, the city of Hayward, and several unincorporated communities. My, you know, my thought, you know, as I listen to the, all the various comments that have been shared, is, you know, that we're definitely, you know, hearing the amount of pain and mistrust that exists in our community, and the need for doing this really important work. I appreciate every effort that's sincere in trying to work at improving understanding and community relations, improving our law enforcement, and most importantly, I think, creating a community that provides preventative measures, rather than having to rely on law enforcement to deal with crises and so forth. We've had some pretty good success in the unincorporated, the unincorporated part of the county and bringing in prevention services, and so I would recommend and encourage folks to lean into. to lean into those kinds of approaches and be happy to share what we've learned here. I also want to say as a pastor who served for 32 years and 20 of them in this part of Hayward, that I have seen consultants be able to be effective when trust is as low as we're hearing it is right now. It is often helpful to have a third party involved. I would, I think it would be helpful for the public to hear how the consulting firm was identified and selected. I'm not as negative as many of the others are about, about a consulting firm. I mean, I do think that third party is helpful, so could someone address how they were chosen?
Okay, thank you. And we'll, we'll try to answer that at the end. The next caller, please?
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
I'm really disappointed in the city's, you know, idea that going to a third party is going to tell them anything different. We've had members of the community come forward to say how they've personally been affected. You know, this is human lives that we're talking about. How many times does somebody's life have to be lost in a situation that shouldn't have happened before we actually think that something has to change? Because personally, I think that one life lost carelessly is enough. I just don't see how a third party is going to put this in a way that's easier for you to understand. There's an issue. It's clear not only here, but other places across the country. And I really think that you guys should be taking the public comments a lot more seriously when it comes to talking about how they see change needs to happen. I'm, I'm just disappointed, quite frankly. You're, you're in a position of privilege that you don't have to experience this firsthand. San Leandro's having a meeting tonight talking about how they're going to take people from the community to actually discuss with them how they think that they should be addressing these problems. I'm, I'm really quite disappointed and disgusted in your guys' response to this. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, this is Alicia Lawrence, and in this evening, I'm calling in my capacity as a Community Services Commissioner. So I know that earlier today, you all received our letter and our own commitments and intentions regarding our work as a commission, as well as the reminder of the policy powers and duties assigned to us, and further 14 different recommendations that we have put forward to council, four which include the Hayward Community Coalition demands that fall under City of Hayward purview. So I'd just like to take a moment to remind you that the Community Services Commission, which you all appoint commissioners to, part of the policy charge is to create and sustain an environment which will encourage and bring about mutual understanding and respect among all groups of the city, eliminate prejudice, discrimination, and disorder, and guarantee equal rights and opportunities for all. And this is only one part of where the commission felt we had purview to not only make the commitments and intentions we made for ourselves, but also to make the 14 recommendations that we have put forth to city council, recommendations that were very, that were really thought over, discussed, thoughtfully debated amongst the subcommittee that was formed and that consensus was made on, and that were unanimously voted for by your very own commission. And so while I think lived experience is very important and vital, you have gotten so much testimony about lived experience from so many people who have called to express their issues with the police. And so at this point, while I really appreciate all the work that staff has put in at your direction to establishing this engagement plan, I do think that you have enough information.
Yes, thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you, Barbara, you have a good day.
Thank you, you too. Next caller, please?
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hi, my name is Erica Richards, I'm a Hayward resident, and I'm calling to support defunding the police and provide resources towards mental health, education funds. And I'm also confused as why a third-party consultant group is being hired to take data for our community when I was told that the community was going to meet with the city council. Alyssa Marquez emailed me that, and now the third party is doing this. So I think it's a slap in the face and disrespectful, and I want to see some real changes made. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hello, this is Angela Andrews, planning commissioner. And I just want to say during my ride-along, I confirmed that the police has become a catch-all for, for everything, from dropping cars to mental health services to being the first responders to domestic issues. And I just want to know if this survey is going to be the opportunity to analyze what community services can appropriately address some of the concerns that the police are seeing. For three months, I think in three months, we can do things in parallel and figure out what are some opportunities that can be addressed by looking at community services to be a first responder, that would be safe to be the first responder. I think we should be using this time to do that. Three months is quite a long time, so I, I went to know what are some of the interim things that the police will be doing to address the community concerns? The other thing I would like to mention is that this survey, I want to know what is the rate of success for surveys in our community? I've seen, I've seen surveys on our, our programs, on Tennyson, what we should do with Tennyson, but have we analyzed the, the success rate of these surveys and do they reflect the community? The other, the last thing I would say is that I've been seeing letters across all different types of businesses how they're going to do better by reviewing their hiring practices, by partnering with minority groups, and I think this is an opportunity, if we are going to move forward with this survey, this is an opportunity to look for a consulting firm that can reflect the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Please go ahead, you're on the air. Hello, are you still there? Hello, you're on the air. Go ahead. Hello, are you still there?
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hello?
Uh, yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, you're on the air.
Yes, I'm calling to, I'm a concerned citizen. I don't understand why you want to spend the money to do studies that have already been done in other cities across the nation, when it is a known fact, what? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
It is, it is a known fact that private and public sector businesses do comparative studies and use information from other cities to compare and as information as to what to do. If you want to have the study done, why don't you use your own salaries, donate your own salaries to do this, and put the budget towards making effective change for the citizens? Power and abuse is part of the problem, whether it's the police, whether it's the police or the people, agencies, the federal city council, and mayors. When you want to do studies, this is just another way of pretend action to dismiss what we're saying to you and not listen to it. I'm concerned about how much of what your decision is, that there is your hand being too much in the pocket of these agencies or businesses that you're trying to promote and not the concern of the community.
Thank you, your time is up, thank you. Next caller, please?
Please go ahead, you're on the air.
Hello, this is Isaac Harris, a community member standing in support of the demands made by the Hayward Community Coalition. We know that too often, these types of consulting groups and committees are used to sideline real bottom-up demands made by the community, and we're seeing that play out here in Hayward. We know that black and brown people need to be guiding the decision-making, not some outsiders coming in and surveying a couple people here and there. And this is a debate around defunding that needs to be had at the city council itself. Oakland is doing it, San Leandro has done it, it's time for Hayward City Council to do it. Let it be seen in front of the residents of Hayward and not tucked away in some obscure committee and some obscure report. So please listen to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Mayor Halliday, that was the last call that we...
All right.
Now, we do have, we are in receipt of a letter from SEIU with a request that the letter be read into the record. Would you like me to read that now, or?
I, um, actually don't know that we, um... Okay. We don't generally, we, we did receive the letter, and I think that we all read it, and it's been read by the city council. Would you like to, you know, summarize the, I think that the basic position from the, of that letter? Yeah, we, we don't read public comments into the, into the record, but we can certainly include that in the, in the discussion.
Mayor Halliday, we're having technical difficulties and have to...
That's not that way.
I'm going to disconnect myself, and I'll rejoin the meeting.
Okay. All right. Um, I'm going to, so I'm going to close public comment on this, and we'll just take a, take a short break while we address these technical problems.
Mayor Halliday, I'm back.
Okay. All right, so, so now we're, we're going to move into council comments. I, I just will say that I know that the letter from SEIU basically said that they, they were asking that the employees that they represent, who are part of the police department, and this is not the uniformed officers, but other support staff, I believe, and the, and other, other members of the police department, be given a seat at the table when we have these discussions. So that was the gist of that letter. So I will now, you want to go? Move to council comments and questions and direction to staff on this work session item. Councilmember Lambon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to start and then may feel the need to come back, but I'll try and be concise. So first of all, I want to appreciate our city staff. You did exactly what we asked you to do as council, which was to help us to dive deeper into what, find a mechanism to dive deeper into what it might look like to, to change how we do safety in our community. How do we make sure that our policies reflect the very, the value that Black Lives Matter? How do we, if we reallocate funding, where might the community want that to go specifically, not just in broad terms, but very specifically? All of, all of what we asked you to do in terms of the next step, you did, and so I want to appreciate that. I think we have to, we have to be able to have really deep conversations. We have to be able to say, what if we, let's look at the Berkeley model and say, you know, if Berkeley's recommending that it's not armed, you know, armed officers that do traffic stops. It's an interesting idea, we need to talk about that. And when we talk about it, we absolutely have to talk about Sergeant Lunger, who five years ago tomorrow was killed on a traffic stop. Was he shot because he was in uniform and therefore somebody else responding may not have that same experience? We hope so. But what if they do? Are we comfortable with that being as an outcome? And I have no judgment about that. What I'm trying to indicate, with all due respect to what happened five years ago, and all due respect to all of the emotions that were brought forward tonight and over the last few months, is we have to be able to have these conversations and play it out all the way, beyond just the moment. But what does that policy mean? What are the implications of that, and what are we able and willing to accept? So, and there are some really interesting ideas that we need to have that full discussion about: traffic safety response, domestic violence response, counseling, et cetera. What do we do in case of a hate crime? All of those are things that we have to be able to talk about. And so I have a few questions about how we get there. So I appreciate the framework that was put out. I'd like to talk briefly, and I'll try and keep this concise, sorry. So tell us a little bit about FM3 as a choice of, of that firm, what you're envisioning in terms of focus groups, the questions on the survey, a little bit more, and given the community feedback, is that still kind of what you're recommending?
So FM3 is a firm, as about two or three, maybe two years ago now, we went through a competitive request for proposals process and selected FM3 to assist us with our biennial resident satisfaction survey. They have assisted a number of cities around the Bay Area with different survey research, focus groups, you know, I know they've worked closely with the City of Oakland and other cities in Alameda County on different surveys. They are very familiar with the political and climate, and also the, the conversation that is going right on right now in our county in particular and also around the country. You know, I think they have great sensitivity for that, that we selected them to help us do this particular research work because of, we, we already had them under contract for our resident satisfaction survey, went through that comprehensive interview process, and to go through another proposal process to request a survey research firm would push this timeline out even further and to try and help us meet the council's timeline, I think they are very qualified to do this work and to move forward with it. That said, this is coupled with the community conversation piece. It is not just about having a consultant do a survey of our residents here in Hayward, but it's also coupled with and simultaneous with the community conversation piece, which will help us really have those deep-dive conversations that you just talked about.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, it's cap members, or community advisory panel members who are going to be part of those conversations or helping to lead them?
It's, we're basically, we will put together kind of a facilitator's guide for the community conversation. conversation to help people who want to host that. It's similar, we've done similar processes when we worked with the community task force in developing the commitment for an inclusive, equitable, and compassionate community, where we ask different community members to facilitate conversations in their communities of interest, and to bring that feedback back in a sort of uniform way so that it's useful and helpful as we bring it back to the council. So, it, it's not limited to the community advisory panel. We are happy to, if people are interested in helping facilitate these discussions, we're happy to work with community members to help them do that.
Great, and is there a interested parties list, a way, how do people communicate back to the city that they want to be leaders in this effort?
Yeah, so that when we launch the web portal, that will include, that'll have contact information for how folks can, and there'll be a form, a web form that people can fill out and provide their email address to either be a part of the, the conversations, or to just receive updates whenever we are talking about this, either having community conversations, or if the issue is coming back to council. So, we'll, we'll be able to gather those, those email addresses. So, hopefully that'll be launched in the next day or so.
Okay, and then, are the GEAR members, the GEAR cohort, the racial equity members involved in this process?
Yeah, so Laurel James, and then was part of last year's GEAR cohort, and really led, led with Marcus Martinez and Lizette Del Pino, the development of our racial equity action plan for the city that we are working on, and, and working on implementing. And then Nick Mullins is part of the GEAR cohort for this year, which, due to COVID, has been delayed in its kickoff, but yes, absolutely, the GEAR cohort members are part of this conversation.
Okay, so certainly we've invested some of the awareness. So, a couple thoughts. One, I think we can look at, you know, certainly the idea to have some, we have had, sorry, a lot of thoughts to organize. We've had really valuable research come back from our community surveys in the past, and it's guided our budgeting and financing and so on, and so I do think it's reasonable. One thing that's a little bit of a challenge is normally we have a budget work session to vet those questions. We're in recess, so not sure how those questions will get vetted, and whether or not what we're able to dig into in those questions is, is some feedback about the proposals that were made by the community coalition, the proposals that were just made by the, by the CSC. There was some really thoughtful work there done, and I certainly want the opportunity for staff and the community, and even myself, I mean, I saw them last week, but I know that I wanna sit with them some more and talk through them and really understand them. Some are pretty straightforward and could be implemented pretty quickly, others, you know, will have other implications that we just need to understand, to make informed choices about them.
Our intent is absolutely to take the community demands and to, the community conversations and some of the survey questions, asking for community sentiment about those different elements, and I think, as you've mentioned earlier, doing a deeper dive into what does, you know, what services would be most important, you know, for the reallocation of funding if that's what the council chose to do. And so, how, how do we, and what are some of those models that people are interested in exploring? So, that will absolutely be part of this conversation.
Good, I appreciate that. Is the decision about SROs, I know that's an HUSD decision, but we hopefully do have some role in that conversation. Do you anticipate that being a law, not made until, you know, for instance, after, or in parallel with our process, I guess is what I'm trying to say?
I believe so. We are, I think I had mentioned to the council, we are working to try and schedule the joint school board, city council meeting, where that will be a topic of conversation. You know, I think we have a little bit of breathing room because the campuses are going to be closed for the first month or two probably of the school year. You know, there is a little bit more time for HUSD to make that decision, so we will, yes, that will be running in parallel with this effort.
Okay, perfect. So, I guess what I'd like to see happen is a lot of the elements, to take a look at whether or not it makes sense to have some incentives that help facilitate, you know, if somebody would need help with a Zoom account, or perhaps, you know, childcare, even in a time when we're sheltered in place, somebody may need childcare while they're able to participate, they need, may need some financial assistance, that we kind of reevaluate the scope of work and see whether or not some of this funds needs to be able to support the community work that you highlighted. And also that, that there are some trauma-informed, trauma-trained folks that are part of these conversations, and just, I'm not gonna say that I know what the right approach there is, but I think it's a, it's a valid point that we may, hopefully we've, we've, I mean, we've certainly heard stories, but if there's a story somebody felt like they needed to tell, and what the impact to that, in telling that story, I wanna be sensitive to that, and so.
Absolutely. Yeah, I forgot to mention that Dr. Emily Young, who heads up the Youth and Family Services Bureau, has also been part of this team, and, and very thoughtful in helping us think about how to structure those conversations to create safe spaces for people who may have, you know, have had, experienced trauma previously.
Appreciate that, and that may be a role that the faith communities can help to facilitate that safe space, and certainly translation services is part of this need. And then lastly, just, I think this is in the planning, but I'll say it, that we also include the youth commission, and very definitely reach out to them for their input as well. And they may be really great for facilitating their own conversation with their peers, as they are youth leaders in the community. Sorry, last, this one really is the last one, which is that I am more than happy to have a, a forum in whatever way is helpful for this effort, as a council member, to have an open office hour on Zoom. I always have office hours, and I announce that all the time, but I'm happy to have a dedicated one on this topic if that feels more inviting to folks, so welcome the opportunity to do that, and I'm happy to do it during recess if, if that's when it needs to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you for your point on the youth commission. I forgot to also mention, we are already working with the Chabot Student Initiative Center, and so leveraging those students to help us do some of the community conversation work. So, we do have a previous relationship with them, and so really getting those voices into the conversation is important.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers are venue.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Kelly, for the report. I agree with my colleague Lambon in that you staff, I, I think did a very good job. We ordered you, or we asked you to come up with a plan that was thoughtful, that was inclusionary, diverse, and that it put the community input first and foremost, as we look for a working for accountability and transparency. And I think that's important, because it all, this plan is gonna be driven by the community, as it has been driven for a while. I agree with just about everything, you know, community conversations, independent, conducted, well, that's the one, hang on to that one, communication and info sharing. So, the points on page two or five of the report, staff report, are excellent. And even before today's public comments, I, I am, I am unsure about a consultant, and the reason is because I believe that the focus groups that these folks would do can be done by our staff. There would be, we're, we're discussing, we're talking about what, thirty different, thirty different participants, a, a survey of four hundred residents, the number is too low, there would be conversations with ten different communities, ten more conversations with the other folks affected by the police, and, and I'm hoping that, that some of those groups, if it not included, it should include Cal State, Chabot, and then of course, the youth commission, as mentioned by, by my colleague Lambon, Lambon. So, that's my only concern as far as the staff report. I really feel that we, our staff, can do the task of collecting how the, our community has been affected. Whether we have a list of people who have, who have particular experiences, that I don't know. I don't know if what we want to come up with is a list of a thousand, a hundred, two hundred and fifty instances of our residents having been maltreated, or have had bad experiences. I don't know if we really want to do that, I don't know if we have a list already, I don't know if this consultant is something that he would do, but I think we can do that. We, we know what, what started, and this was Mr., you know, George, unfortunately. So, the thought of, moving on, the thought of the staff coming up with a plan to effectively fund health programs, advisory programs, community programs, is a good one, and you mentioned that that will happen, and that staff will work on it. The web portal is tremendous in that anybody in the community, hopefully, will have to think about how to reach those who do not have a computer, but the web portal, that will mean that anybody in the community can contact the members of the panel, can contact members of the city staff in charge of this particular program, so that's important. One aspect that the, needs to be included in, in the report is how, or consider educating our residents that not everything is an emergency, or, or perhaps be more specific as to what that particular emergency is, so that this way the dispatcher can say, well, it seems that something is amiss, so maybe, you know, police officers have to consider, okay, maybe this is not necessary, maybe we don't need to be there, we, we don't need to, you know, go over and do this. I, I kinda disagree with my friend Jesse Arregui from, from Berkeley, that, you know, traffic stops may not be necessary, and, you know, I, colleague Lambon mentioned one of the reasons, you never know. It, it was like, when I did my ride-alongs, police officers kept telling me, the, the, the ones, the calls that we really hate going to are the ones where it's a domestic dispute, because you don't know what's gonna happen, so it's, that's hard. All right, let's see. So, that's one I like. Moving on to the proposal, or the letter that we received by the commission, I like just about everything that they have to propose, but there are two things that I think we need to look into or study some more. One of them is the not hiring the free, the hiring freeze of the police officers, and, and this is the reason why. So, we have more or less, what, a hundred and eighty-three police officer at the moment, active police officers, so if we keep not hiring one, and people keep retiring, all right, eventually that force is gonna be a lone number. So, the commission, or the advisory council, or the staff, or the, the police chief, we, the city council and the community, we, we need to come up with, okay, so what is the correct number of police officers for a city that is a hundred and sixty thousand people? Is it a hundred? Is it a hundred and fifty? Is it fifty? So, so we, we can't just say, no more hire, no more hire of police officers, so then if...
Councilmembers are venue, I don't know if you can hear me, but we're not hearing you right now, you're frozen on the screen.
Go on to the next council member.
So, we will come back to you if you can hold that thought, and I don't have any other council members who have requested to speak. Councilmember Salinas, go ahead.
Yeah, I saw, okay. So, I wanted to again thank all the callers for calling, and, and I also wanted to thank SEIU 1021 for sending us their letter, and I think that was, you know, I think it's great, whatever conversation we have regarding the police department and the police budget, there are approximately a hundred, a hundred SEIU members within the police department, so we, you know, of course, we wanna make sure we include them, and, and I thought their letter was written, you know, it was, it was a good letter, and I thought it was genuine, and, and I think it was genuinely reaching out to us, and, and with a, with a strong, you know, framing of, of what's at stake and what's happening today, so I appreciate that. I, you know, when I read the staff report, I, I wrote a lot of notes, but, you know, I, I also struggled because I wanted to listen to what folks called in to talk about, and, and what their perspective was, and, and so there was, there was one aspect of the conversation that, that I too was struck by, and that piqued my attention, and I wanna address that. But I also wanna talk about the community conversations and, and the process about that, and I look at that as sort of the, the data collection process, but before that, before we get to the, to the, to that, I wanna talk about the, the consultant, and while I understand the, the explanation that the city manager gave us, and, you know, it makes sense, you know, they've done work with us, and they have history with us, I, I also began to think about, you know, if we are going to go out and collect shared stories and lived experiences regarding, you know, these issues that were, that we've been, you know, grappling with for a very long time, and we've been responding to for a very long time, from, you know, Black Lives Matter, to issues around immigration, issues around, you know, homophobia, xenophobia, you know, these, we've been, I think the city's been grappling with these issues for a very long time, at least, or as long as, you know, I've been on the council, and I've, something that I've always have brought up and have always talked about is the assets we have in the city that I think we don't tap enough, and that is, you know, our two colleges, you know, we have Cal State East Bay, and we have Chabot. And, and what makes these colleges, I think, unique, unlike other colleges, is that we're, we're very fortunate to have longstanding ethnic studies departments at both of these universities, both of these colleges, that have been around for a very long time, and what, what I'd like to suggest is, you know, is that we reach out to our ethnic studies faculty, who, you know, are quite versed in these issues, both on the theory level, and then on policy level, and on practice level. They, they know how to lead discussions, they know how to... They know how to, uh, they're very well-informed, uh, in, uh, in working with, uh, both adults and with students, young students, um, around, you know, issues around, um, you know, the traumatic experiences around racism and, um, and other kinds of, uh, traumatic experiences that come up. Um, I know for myself, I've been in the classroom. One of the things I tell my own students that, you know, I go, uh, you know, we're gonna be talking about things in this, in this class that may trigger emotions and may trigger experiences. And, um, and sometimes, and this is often the case in, in scholars of color. And, uh, and this is often one of the reasons why a lot of scholars of color pursue the, uh, academic areas that they pursue. And for me, it was the, um, history of education. Uh, and one of the things I've always, that piqued my attention, particularly when I was a student and, and more so in grad, in graduate school, was a lot of my own family members didn't like talking about school. Um, it's not because they didn't like talking about school or it wasn't because of anything in particular, um, other than, other than their experience in school wasn't very good. And, um, and particularly with communities of color. And we can take school experiences and we can sort of expand that to other experiences. Experiences coming to the United States, experiences with the police department, the very issues that we're trying to get at today. And, um, and I think ethnic studies faculty is, you know, given that, uh, the ethnic studies department has, um, an African-American studies department, a Latinx studies department, uh, Asian and Asian-American studies department. You know, we could, uh, Native American, American Indian, uh, studies department. You know, we have faculty there that are, that are, you know, trained, skilled and experts, uh, in leading these discussions. And, um, and so I, I feel that, um, instead of going out and, uh, you know, hiring a consultant, that we really, really use the assets that we have, uh, in the city. The second point I want to make with the consultant is, uh, I really agree and, and, um, with, um, you know, Pastor Neering, Dr. Neering that called. And, you know, one of the, uh, one of the things that I respect a great deal about Pastor Neering is, uh, she has had, um, one is, you know, her reputation in the, in, in the city and her reputation in the community. And, um, and, and I look at her and then I look at other pastors. You know, there's, um, you know, Bishop McLean, uh, who leads Glad Tidings. And then there's, uh, pastors at All Saints, St. Bead's, St. Jolcom's. Um, and then of course, uh, Pastor Maganya over and over on Gadding. You know, these are faith leaders that families trust. These are faith leaders that have churches, that, uh, their, uh, congregants are from the neighborhoods. They're diverse and they come to church, they go to church with experiences that, um, that pastors, uh, can, um, uh, you know, can talk to families about. And so I, you know, um, process like these, when we talk about race, uh, experiences with police, experiences around immigration, experiences around, um, discrimination in relation to religion and, and immigration, et cetera. Um, you know, these are, these are conversations that, uh, I think people are, um, would have and be more comfortable with that, you know, with people that they're, that they interact with and they engage with on a daily basis. Um, so I, my, my, my advice or my, you know, direction would be to really, you know, think about that. How can we use, you know, Dr. Behan, Dr. Luis Galvo, um, you know, Dr. Salomon and Salomon, uh, from the ethnic studies department up at Cal State? Um, these are folks that are trained. These are folks that are experts in these areas. Second, and then, uh, community conversations. Um, you know, I, I have a, an, a, a great deal of respect for the Hayward Collective. I have a great deal of respect for, uh, the, um, the Hayward Community Coalition. Uh, they've done great work. I'm not gonna deny that. And, you know, they're, the, uh, uh, the folks that, um, they've been able to organize and, and rally around, particularly around, um, the actions that we've had around town. I think that's, uh, um, and considering the context. I mean, I always, you know, when we talk about Black Lives Matter and when we talk about related issues, um, all of this is, the backdrop of this, of course, is this pandemic. We're, we're sort of situated in this pandemic. And, and so, um, what they've been able to accomplish within this, uh, context, I think, is, is, is absolutely, uh, commendable and I, and they have my respect. Conversely, if we're going to talk honestly and across communities in the city, um, I'd like for us to be equally engaged, uh, with kids, uh, working with the school district, working with other schools that we have, uh, in the city and have honest conversations and collect honest data with, with kids. And, and, and talk to kids about race and about immigration and about other types of, uh, hate that manifest, um, not only in the city and face-to-face, but also online. Cause, um, for us to think that this, uh, that hate only exists in person would be short-sighted. Uh, hate also manifests online and, um, uh, you know, on social media. Um, I'd also like to include seniors. Uh, if we're going to reach out, I'd like to see a discussion, a focus group, uh, with seniors. Uh, and, you know, mobile home parks have community centers where we can have, you know, gatherings when, you know, of course, when it's safe. Uh, and, um, uh, or we can come up with other, uh, strategies to include, um, mobile home communities. And then also, um, uh, neighborhood alert groups, uh, including, uh, you know, um, uh, the leaders, the block captains, uh, bringing in, um, you know, uh, volunteer neighborhood, family volunteers, uh, for a neighborhood alert. Um, uh, this year, I don't know what the police department is gonna do or what the city's been talking about in terms of National Night Out. Um, I've seen, uh, some, I've seen some, um, reports that, uh, other cities are gonna do like virtual National Nights Out where it's gonna be like one big Zoom, uh, which is interesting. Uh, but considering of, you know, what I, uh, you know, saw and heard of what happened last night, um, that'll be, uh, an interesting, um, uh, feat to achieve. But, um, my, my point in that is that I, I really want to see, uh, a, um, a true representation of the city, uh, engaged and, um, and, and brought into the conversation. And, and I, and I'm not saying that to disrespect, you know, um, the, the Hayward Community Coalition and the Hayward Collective. And they've, like I said, they've been, and I should, I should also say that the Community Services Commission, uh, read their letter. Um, and, you know, I, and I respect the, 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 uh, the commission's work on this. And, and they're right, they went through a very lengthy process. And, um, uh, and so, you know, I just really want to make sure we have as, uh, a, a, as a robust, uh, inclusion, uh, inclusive, uh, conversation around what we are going to do around the budget and particularly around the budget with the police department and the police department. And I, and I think that this, uh, this is a community conversation. I absolutely agree with the callers about that. Uh, it is a community conversation. It is a democratic community conversation. And, um, and so that's why I really want to make sure, uh, we, uh, you know, we keep to that. I, and, um, but, uh, so in terms of the consultant, I, I hope, I really hope that we can figure out a way to include, uh, our, our great faculty up at Cal State, uh, and at Chabot, uh, in leading, uh, tapping their expertise and, um, and their skills in the methodology and approaches in this kind of work. Uh, and perhaps, uh, redesignate those dollars, uh, to do, um, to support their work, uh, um, uh, doing this work. So, uh, those are my comments right now and, uh, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any other council members wanting to...
Mayor, I couldn't wait.
Well, I, um, I do, I do see our police chief houses hand raised. Um, Chief Chaplin, did you want to make a statement or ask a question?
Yeah, just real fast. I think, um, there's been a lot of discussion about, uh, about the police budget and about, um, about changes in the police department with very little input from the police. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And to echo what, uh, Councilmember Salinas just said, um, this truly has to be a community discussion. And that's why I'm in favor of doing this survey. And, you know, and the collective and other groups have put in a lot of work in this thing. And I don't think it's lost to anybody on this forum though, that, um, we've pretty much had a bunch of community conversations and, uh, we've heard from some key community members, but the repetition is not lost on, like, I think, any of us. We've heard some of the same folks speaking over and over again. Um, and about the community forum last night that was hijacked by some, uh, racist, uh, person with a rant, that was sent out for investigation and it's currently being investigated by, um, your police department. That's what we do. And somebody said earlier, all we do is protect property. That's absolutely what we do not do. And to talk about, this needs to be done now. I think we need to be measured in this. I think what needs to be done now is the consideration that we've had, um, the total number of homicides in 2018 and 2019 in the first half of this year. And that's what needs to be talked about. That's a public safety issue. And I live in this city and I've talked to a lot of the folks that live, move, move in, uh, and, and work around and live in this city too. And their voices are absolutely not he, heard. And that's why I think the survey is important. Because, you know, like a lot of these folks that we talk about putting in a lot of work, they do not represent the hundred and sixty thousand people that live in this city. There's a lot of folks who are emailing and, uh, writing to the police department and writing to you, the council members, quite frankly, about, uh, how they feel about this whole thing. And I think it's important to get everybody's input into this. Um, I, I, you know, I think it's dangerous to get a, a group and to try to mirror what other cities are doing because Hayward is not like other cities. Our diversity is off the charts. We are completely different from other cities and I would not ever think to try to compare ourselves to other cities. I think, um, we have an opportunity here to reach out and get some, uh, other perspectives on what people, other folks in a city that may be working and not be able to sit up and do this is, uh, the only thing that they're kind of focused on right now, but still have the same concerns because they still live in the impacted neighborhoods by this violence that we're seeing. Um, we were just mentioning a newspaper with San Francisco and Richmond and Vallejo because of the number of, uh, of, of violent assaults and homicides we've had in our city, shootings we've had in our city. So I think we need to find out what the priorities are for our community members. Not a small subset, but the entire community. And so when I hear talk about people saying, uh, how we feel, how us, and this is ours, um, that's dangerous and is divisive. And that's why having this outside group come in. And, uh, Councilmembers, I mean, you know, I appreciate your perspective, but there's been some, uh, anti-police rhetoric on some of our campuses and, um, it's been a little widespread. So it's nice to have an outside perspective come in that, that, that can just look at this from a clean, clear lens and talk to folks without any biases present and find out what they want to see out of their city and their police department specifically. You know, um, this is, this is a way, this is a way to get that information out. And quite frankly, I would like the, uh, the, uh, the council to consider that and the mayor, you two, to consider it. Um, you know, we need to find out what our community truly wants. And we're not gonna find that out here from the same thirty people over and over again. And with that, I will, I will end my comments.
All right. Thank you for that perspective. I'm gonna go back to, um, Councilmember Wahab. Did you wanna, uh, did you wanna add anything in here?
I believe Councilmember Marquez was ahead of me.
No, you can go ahead, you can go ahead. She, she, I don't see her hand now, so go ahead.
I'll wait, thank you. I'll wait, thank you.
Go, please make your, okay, well, I'm gonna end this now, except I think Councilmembers, I wanted to. Uh, so if you want to speak, please go ahead and speak.
Mayor, I'll go.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, this is really, um, difficult conversation to have. Um, I definitely hear, uh, the pain, the urgency. Uh, but I was also very clear when we had our budget discussion that we do need to engage the broader community. Um, it's now almost eleven o'clock at night. I highly respect the people that have been waiting to weigh in in public comments who have emailed us, but, um, they're not the same people that are emailing us directly or calling us. So we do have a responsibility to all of our community members to hear everyone's concerns. That is not to discredit any group, whether that's thirty, fifty, sixty, hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty. Um, your life experience, your testimony is real and valid. And I care about that. And in order to have this comprehensive discussion, I do feel strongly in having to do this community engagement and further analysis. What I'm struggling with is, this is the input, getting feedback about actual situations in different neighborhoods. But what I'm not seeing in this plan is the policy discussion. I don't see this being tied into what we mentioned in the budget was, which is mid-year budget discussion, um, what policies can we change? Um, I feel that our community is ready for transformation. However, I'm not prepared to make those recommendations until I have a broader perspective from community members in terms of what they see as being, uh, reoccurring themes, issues. Um, I have a good sense, but like I said, there, there's a huge segment that's missing. So really for me to feel comfortable with this plan, I need to see it attached to actionable items. Um, when are we gonna actually discuss, as I mentioned during the budget vote, the seven demands? You know, it's clear not all are within our purview. Like, when is that going to be analyzed? Um, and also not limit the conversation to those demands. Um, wanna see more about mental health response. Um, CSC is recommending an alternative line, three-one-one. So there's a lot of good ideas out there. Just don't see the timeline as to when we're gonna vet those. So I understand this is preliminary kind of fact gathering, but...
I'm happy to, um, yeah. I mean, that, the intent of the community conversations and the survey and the whole plan is to vet those policy options that came up through the seven demands document and some of the other suggestions that have come up through the conversations. And there may be others that come up during the survey, during the community conversations. So that's the goal of the process, is to actually vet those policy discussions that have, have been occurring and those recommendations.
Okay. And then to speak to the letter from the CSC, the committee, I do appreciate their work and their recommendations. However, we received it, I think, like around noon today. So, um, and we had a closed session and we had, I think, over a thousand pages to prepare to read for tonight's meeting. We had work session meetings last night. We have committee meetings tomorrow. Uh, this council has just been inundated with, with the workload and reading and responding to other inquiries. So it's not that we're not being responsive. It's just that we truly need time to read over carefully. And, um, I'm committed to following up on that letter as well as, I mentioned earlier, the seven demands, but not limited to that. Um, what I'm also hearing from our community is reliving the trauma. So I want to know if there's any way we could partner with our local nonprofits for people that do not have insurance, if they needed to take advantage of counseling, therapy. Are there any resources that we can offer? Um, I don't know how many... I don't know how many people will actually take advantage, but I think it would be helpful to at least offer it to those that may need it. I also feel like we as a city haven't stood in solidarity to say that Black Lives Matter and to affirm that and to do a statement. So I would like to see us write, put something in writing in collaboration with our police chief. I know we, we signed on to the mayor's pledge for the 21st century policing, but a deliberate statement to speak to the national conversation and also acknowledge our challenges we've had in our own, our own community. So I think we just need to be a little bit more candid and put timeline to this plan. It's not ideal, but I, I do feel like we do need to go through this practice in order to have a fuller understanding. And that's not to dismiss any of the comments or email that have been received up to this point. I can only speak for myself, but I hear you. I know that they're valid and I know that they're real. Just want to allow an opportunity for more people to weigh in. In terms of the consultant, that scope is just to conduct the 400 surveys and how are they going to go about selecting? I was pleased to see that we're going to be surveying people that aren't necessarily registered voters, you know, just residing in Hayward. But how are they actually going to randomly select these individuals?
Um, I, I believe that they, and that they have a statistically significant system that they use in, in every community that they work with. And it is based on address, you know, address, location. And then what they will do is statistically wait the responses, you know, based, you know, based on demographic characteristics. So there's a methodology, it's a very, you know, there's a methodology that they use to do that. But they use, you know, address listings and the voter file and other sources to get that community input.
Okay. And so a request I do have is that before those questions are finalized, that the community advisor, the chief's community advisory panel have an opportunity to review them as well as the entire city council before they go out to the public. And to piggyback on Councilmember Lamin's comment with regard to a town hall, I think we should all host at least one or two. We definitely need the supportive staff. We could identify one evening, block out two to three hours. I don't know if we need to do pre-register or how detailed we need to get, but I think we do need to offer that opportunity to just basically go on a listening tour. You know, we could have some guided prompts, but definitely, so that way we can hear directly from whomever wants to participate, what, what their concerns are. I just want to try to broaden that conversation so it's not specifically to the members that we've identified to host the community conversations. Also want us to reach out and I'd be happy to do it, but I'm thinking of a couple pastors. Aaron Macklin, Bishop Macklin's son, Esteban Pineda with Victory Outreach. We, we definitely need to tap into the faith-based communities and specifically the individuals in our community that have been impacted by being incarcerated. I want to make sure that we're reaching out to that segment as well. And was a bit disappointed to see in the staff report when we list stakeholders, that it didn't mention the community coalition, who's obviously been very active in bringing this issue. So we need to include them as well when we're having this conversation. And I know I had asked during the budget discussion if we had a liaison, someone to kind of keep in communication with them. And I believe the response was the Gare Ho-Hurt. Is that correct?
Um, actually, I know that Laurel, Mary and Nick did meet with members of, of the collective and the community coalition last week to, to share this plan with them before it was published in the, in the council packet.
Okay. All right. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Those are all my comments for now. So since this is a work session.
So I just, you know, one, one question, you know, I have a little bit of concern about coming back to the full council to vet the survey questions since we are not meeting again, as the council's not meeting again until September 15th, which would then not allow us to complete the survey. We, we do have a budget and finance committee meeting next week. We could do some initial brainstorming with the budget and finance committee about questions. I think if council members have specific questions they'd like to see in the survey, that you could email them to me and then we can have that conversation. I, I just am concerned that, that it just delays it further. If we, we can definitely vet the questions with the community advisory panel. I'm happy to share, you know, the questionnaire with the, the community coalition, the folks who've been involved in that, at least to get some feedback on, on how the questions that we're asking on the survey. I'm just concerned about bringing it back to the full council, given that the council's on recess for the next month.
Oh, so at this point, I hear you. So I'll accept if we have specific things we want outlined in the survey for us to individually email you. But I would appreciate the chief advisory panel, if possible, the budget committee. I know it's kind of quick, but if possible, that would be ideal, as well as the community coalition, just for early feedback. So again, this isn't for any one group to have the final say, but, but to, to give their input, to make sure that we're being comprehensive and inclusion and really getting at different needs within the community in terms of community policing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
All right. Um, I, I definitely appreciate the staff report. You know, I, I would have preferred it a little bit earlier than, than Saturday, you know, when we publish something if, if it could be with the full packet, because some people kind of read it ahead of time and don't realize that there's a second part of it. Um, I, I, um, so I, I definitely appreciate the letter from SEIU. SEIU sent a letter saying that they are very much concerned about the impacts when, when people are talking about defunding the police, that their jobs, they be at the table when discussing anything like that because they do clerical work, you know, things like that. So I, I do agree with that. SEIU should be at the table if there are any conversations around this. I also appreciate the letter from the Chamber of Commerce. They wrote a letter to council stating that they are support of, are supportive of school resource officers in the schools. So that's a interesting perspective from our chamber. And I also spoke to our Police Officers Association President, and they would also like to be included in community engagement. And we kind of went over some of this. I will say that the police officers, they should be surveyed themselves, separate from community, and by community, I mean residents, to see what is the police department's take on a wide variety of issues. Policy, procedure, the discussions in the community, any changes that they believe is pertinent. So when I talk about inclusion, I definitely want to be very fair and include all, all aspects of society. And that includes the police department, SEIU and community members, regular community members. So I do want to say that. I, I want a little clarity. So this is a simple yes or no question on whether or not the community demands referenced in the staff report, as well as the CSC's up, you know, letter that they sent to us this, this morning, I know we sent last week, but we received it this, this morning, would be included in the community engagement efforts. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. And if that can be highlighted and listed very specifically, because I know we reference the demands, but the demands have, have, let's say evolved in the sense that there were seven demands then from the, from the community coalition, and then eventually it went to four demands. And then the Community Services Commission have their own set of additional points to, to cover. So I definitely want that clearly highlighted if we can. And then, um, I know a lot of people reference the community advisory panel, so City Manager McAdoo. I know that this is a commission, this is a commission of residents that is meeting, that their meetings are regularly not open to the public. The meetings are not agendized. The meeting is not necessarily recorded. They don't really adhere to the Brown Act. And, you know, I've already brought up in the past the, the NDA. So I'm asking if the cap will now follow the rules of other commissions by being agendized and following all the rules that regular commissions do? If this is going to be an avenue where community can put their input and they're going to be involved in this process? Would that happen? Yes or no?
That's something we have to bring back to council because the way that the community advisory panel was set up initially, it is an advisory panel to the chief of police, not to the council. So it, they can absolutely schedule open forums. They can host meetings. They can have open meetings. But right now they are not set up as a Brown Act committee. So that would be a discussion that the council would need to have at another date to, to basically change the charter of that committee, if that's what the council chose to do.
Okay. And I do believe that this should be up for consideration, since we're, you know, going to be relying on them in so many ways. Plus, we are a city that hopefully prides ourselves on transparency. So I, I do believe that that's important to have. In regards to FM3, the research company, I do know, I, I heard all the comments regarding the research firm, and I personally have my own questions, primarily City Manager McAdoo. There was not a competitive bid process or, you know, for a request for proposal.
There, there was when we selected them about a year and a half ago.
A year ago. And we selected them to do what they're known for, which is ballot measure research, as well as campaign research. So.
Well, they, actually we selected them to do our resident satisfaction survey. It wasn't related to the ballot measure at that point.
Uh, true, but, but their, their expertise, as they have stated, is in these two fields. Specifically, it brings up another topic that FM3 has a website that states that they, again, are a ballot and candidate focused firm, but they do cover a couple of other items listed under their criminal justice reform focus area. They are focused simply on drug policy, such as marijuana ballot measures. And their examples state that, and sentencing reform, but not policing in communities of color. Considering that, you know, even in this meeting, we discussed how the city of Hayward is the third most diverse city in the United States, which in itself is impressive, as we are a people of color city, I think that that should be a priority. So as people of color, as mentioned in the staff report, are the most targeted by police engagement, I do believe that people of color, and to be clear, black indigenous people of color need to be very much included in this. So when I did some research, very basic research on the firm's website, it looked like there are very few, and I'll be honest, I, I think zero researchers that are people of color working at this firm, specifically under the researcher category. And that raises a concern with, with even their selection in doing this because if they do not have researchers that have their own lived experiences, the RFP for this particular item, I do think needs to be reevaluated. We need to be able to select a more local, culturally sensitive and trauma-informed firm selected to do community engagement. And I can speak for myself, you know, I, I went through the foster care system. I've been adopted. I've gone through that process. But every article I read, there's a big chunk missing in, in, you know, lived experiences. So I can probably say the same for those individuals that are dealing with policing. Now, after highlighting this concern, will there be an option to incorporate a more culturally sensitive, trauma-informed and social work-focused approach to be incorporated in a true and fair community engagement?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what your question is, but I think if you're talking about, you know, the lens with which the questions for the survey will be prepared, as well as the community conversations, I think that is why, you know, we will be engaging so many different stakeholders around that process because we absolutely want to make sure that the way that we are asking the questions and the way that we are engaging with the community is done so in a culturally sensitive and appropriate manner. And, and really gets to an understanding of, of the trauma that people have experienced. And so I think, you know, the, the benefit of FM3 is they have the technical methodology. But I think, you know, as Councilmember Salinas mentioned, leveraging some of our other community resources for the content of the survey, you know, that, that is value as well. And, and there will be that, that lens that will be applied to the community conversations, which will be conducted by Hayward community members and stakeholders.
So we live in the Bay Area and in Oakland alone, there are so many different nonprofits and organizations that really do focus on these particular issues that are firms that are owned and run by people of color. I do think that it, it would be wise to engage with one of these firms, even if, if, if interested as a partnership. Again, you know, our colleagues have stated that there are so many talented members from Cal State East Bay, Chabot and so forth. And, you know, at the same time, I also hear our chief stating that that's maybe not also the case. So I would rather put a little investment here in a third party, potentially, I'm going to say outside of Hayward, but, but local organization that could help us with this. And methodology, you are only good as the question being asked in a survey. So I, I do believe that, you know, as a person who, with a political science background, questions and surveys and methodology matter. And, and I want us to be transparent and at least fair in the types of questions we ask. And I want those questions to be transparent to folks prior to even the survey being available because I do want people to, to take a look at it. Speaking on the survey, you know, I, I know that their lucky number, even for the residential satisfaction survey that they completed for us a couple of months back, 400 Hayward residents would be completing this 15-minute survey on, on this topic, as, as the staff report stated. My concern is that that is not even 1% of the population of 160,000 residents in our city. I do believe that we should increase the number to get at a solid, I would even say a sample size of 5%, something that seems a little bit more reasonable. Because that is a significant concern. Because as, as the staff report continued on, they said that, it was said that, you know, the fact that only 30 participants can be included in the focus group and it's, it's pretty much hand-selected, I, I hesitate with this. I would like multiple focus groups with multiple different participants. And even with the survey, if, if, let's say we're doing it in a virtual manner, you know, the question is, we have a huge digital divide. And then at the same time, do we know for sure that it's going to be unique to the individual participant? So I do have concerns around methodology. I'm very big on that. And then overall, basically, how are we choosing stakeholder? You know, for example, the, the chief referenced bias. So, so when we talk about stakeholders and so forth, you know, I, I definitely want it to be at least a balance. If, you know, everyone has a bias, like that's, that's part of being a human being in a, in a way. So I, I definitely want that to be considered. To highlight a point that's not even on this, how the data is collected and be managed and shared of the participants that share their experience is of concern to me because I don't want it to be identifiable or trackable in the future or things like that. But I definitely want us as council to at least have the transparency. And I, I do want, you know, certain incentives provided. Usually nonprofits will provide gift cards or counseling options or some type of financial compensation for their time. You know, some consideration around things like that. But my primarily and overall, I, you know, just to conclude, I definitely want this to be policy-focused. I don't necessarily, like, as much as I want the experience of these individuals, I want it to be policy and driven based on what has already been brought up. And to highlight what the chief said, that, you know, the typical 30 people that call in, I will also highlight to the chief, because he is not aware of our emails, we have received hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of emails from Hayward residents and possibly other stakeholders that are interested in some type of action around public safety. Now, in regards to our police department, when, when we hear, you know, there's a section. Now, in regards to our police department, when we hear, you know, there's a section that you can go to the police department website and says compliments and complaints, I do believe that council should be informed of our department, both the compliments and the complaints, because I'm sure that there are many compliments about our police department and the work that they do on a daily basis, but we do not see that. We also don't see the complaints. So I would like that to be a more transparent process. And overall, I believe that we need to be inclusive, truly inclusive in the process in engaging community members. So I want all people to feel comfortable to be participating. And primarily, I'm asking that the demands be highlighted, clearly addressed in the community engagement plan. I would like us to move faster than what we have. I am completely willing to meet in August, primarily because council can request a special meeting, and I do believe that this is special enough to request a special meeting. So I don't want to say that we can't meet just because August is recess. I also want a more transparent and inclusive process for the vendor to be selected. I don't think that FM3 and what they've provided thus far, as well as just the background that I've seen, is sufficient to engage on this particular item. And finally, with obviously the involvement of both of the unions, I definitely want to understand that. I'm more interested in data relating to the demands made, improvements to specific areas to the police department, policies, metrics, and to see how equitable policing is throughout the city. So a full analysis of this particular department and policies and ways for improvement, I think, are the priority alongside the demands of the community that has been asked for in the last couple of months. Finally, I do believe that we can all hold a goal and work towards a goal that may seem idealistic of the world and the city we want to have. Some of us are more idealistic than others, and others are more constrained in their ideals and their lived experiences of what has happened and so forth. But I also believe there's room for both of the viewpoints and perspectives if we can acknowledge that we're working towards the same thing from different perspectives, have respect for those perspectives, and that simply the concept is a public safety system that works for all people. So that is my goal, and I definitely want us to be more transparent, respectful, and inclusive of all the viewpoints here. So I just wanted to end on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Romania? Do you have?
Yeah, let's see, I've been having some difficulties, but I think we're okay now. I did make some several statements, and I think you heard most of them, I believe, before I was cut off or something. So I do like the thought that, and I repeat this, and this is that the plan is inclusionary, the plan is diverse, the plan is community-driven, that's tremendous. And I think that what's important is that we're going to work on this in order to fight the lack of equity that we have in our city, in the presence of racism that is still present, unfortunately, with this. And that's extremely important. And I think that, I think that's, oh, one of the points from the letter that we got from the commission, I'm not really sure that we need to have another community committee. I believe that the HPD Community Advisory Panel ought to be Brown acted, and I believe they're the ones that could possibly look into the funding or refunding or taking some of the funds and putting them into a health program, into a community program, into advisory program. Those are my comments. I believe that I touched on everything else. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your comments. I thought there were a lot of really good ones made by everyone, and I know the city manager and I were both taking notes here. So just, you know, I appreciate the, we've already been in this process, we're in it, we're going to be in it for quite some time now until, and I think the policies will come, and they will come one by one, and we may be, you know, we may be considering policies well into next year that emerge from what we're trying to do here, which is really listen to the community and evaluate, evaluate what our police department is doing and how they're doing it, and try to come up with ways that we can improve the whole process and maybe do some things differently. And, you know, I think the conversation that's being had at the national level and in the region, that's important, but we are Hayward, we are a unique community, and we need to really figure out what our residents want and how we can make that happen. So I just, I do thank everybody who contributed, the Coalition, the Community Services Commission letter, the SCIU letter, we will definitely take into consideration. I know I attended the school board, the four, the community meeting that was held on Zoom regarding the school resource officers, which was very enlightening and had, you know, a lot of varied viewpoints, and I think that's what we're getting from our community, too. One thing that I think is, I don't know whether it's missing, but something that we really need and that needs to be a big part of this, and that some others have brought up along the way, is data. Is what, you know, what is the data that we have now regarding our police department? The, you know, first of all, I have not seen crime stats in a while, and we haven't had our annual report this year, there have been, you know, so we need, we need to know, where are we right now in terms of, I think primarily, the nature of the calls that we get, what are they, you know, and quantify, you know, what percentage might be better handled by a mental health professional or by the fire department even, by, you know, need for medical service. So we need to look at that, and I think Councilmember Waha brought up about the complaint, you know, what kind of complaints have we already gotten? What are we hearing right now? I think that the chief's advisory panel is what it is now. It's constituted as an advisory panel, it is not under the Brown Act. Part of the reason for that is this requirement that we have, that people on our boards and commissions be qualified electors, meaning registered to vote, meaning U.S. citizens. And we, and I don't honestly know, but we really wanted, we wanted to reach out to the segment of our community that, who are not qualified electors and make sure that they were excluded from this panel. However, we have a, we have a charter amendment coming up on the ballot in November that may give us a little more flexibility there, and I would fully support evolving that advisory panel into a more robust and Brown Act compliant committee. It's, the issue of the consultant, we do need that professional assistance to do the technical stuff, and, you know, and I think that, you know, we have used them for our community, for our resident satisfaction survey. So I think there were some good points made, though, about how much control are they going to have? I think the questions, I would really like to see the questions, more input into that you're going to, I understand, discuss them with the community advisory panel. And I have been sitting in on those meetings, and they're very, very thoughtful comments, and I can tell you that the members of this panel are very committed to listening to everybody on this issue and to coming up with good recommendations. So I'm very pleased with the work that they're doing now, but, and so they're going to vet the questions, but could you possibly just send them to all the council members and ask for comments back individually? So that would give us the chance to give our input without having, you know, necessarily having to meet to do that. And, you know, also, you know, we're going to, we're having to do this at a time where it is made so much more difficult by the health department orders, by the fact that we have to talk through masks, that we can't really meet people who aren't in our social bubbles in person. So I think that we do need some assistance and expertise from a consultant, and I am supportive of that, but they are not running the show, they will not run the show. We will do that, and, you know, we want, we want to find a variety of ways where everybody in the community feels comfortable in communicating with us in some way, and that is made more difficult by the times we're living in, but we're going to have to do our best to do I think the Councilmember Marquesa's idea about the town hall, or, you know, about each of us hosting our own perhaps, and I was thinking, and someone brought up, we will not be having, as far as I know, there are no plans to do National Night Out or any of the activities that have been associated with that in the past. And that actually might be a somewhat good thing in terms of, that'll be another thing that I think we'll want to look at, how we do that kind of outreach and how we get, we get people in the neighborhoods involved in their own public safety and contributing to that. National Night Out is one effort to do that. So it is a shame that we can't use that forum. I haven't heard about the Zoom parties in other communities. So it might be something we might want to think about because that is a very popular event in our city, and there's no way we can have it this year the way we have been. But maybe we can have some neighborhood meetings along those lines and include this as a discussion. So with that, those are my comments. I do think overall, this plan is a good start. I just want to assure everyone that that's certainly, it's a start, and it will give us information that we need to move forward and make those policy decisions, changes that are being requested, armed with the knowledge we need about what the community actually is experiencing, what they want out of policing and out of, you know, the various other services that we offer. There is a lot of, oh, I would actually like more information and perhaps a report on the pilot program that we are part of. It's not Kahoots, which is one that's out there, but it's a similar program that we have not really heard much about that. So I would like to see a report to council about what's happening with that. But mental health, responding to mental health issues is something that we will very much have to do in cooperation with the county, and, you know, that means working with the other communities in the county to, you know, and our county supervisors to make sure that we're coordinating those efforts. So I think that, I want the community to know that we are very much attuned to what is being recommended, promoted, the stories that are being shared, there are many, you know, there are many stories of people suffering from having been victims of crime and want, you know, want the police to do a better job of catching people who have committed those crimes there. You know, we hear these things all the time through emails and phone calls and just conversations that we have out there, and I've been hearing more of them lately. So there's a lot, there's a lot to be said, and I think it is worth taking the time to have this full conversation and to carry out this plan. And I think that something very good and transformative will come out of it. So with that.
Mayor, I just want to comment, I know Councilmember Mendel is not here this evening, but he did send both you and I an email expressing support for the plan as outlined in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Marquesa, you have something else you wanted to add?
Yes, Mayor, I'm not sure if I misunderstood, I just wanted to clarify that the chief advisory panel, we did open it up to people that are non-registered voters.
Correct. Non-sens.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for that. And now we are going to move on to item number 11 on our agenda, which is the League of California Cities 2020 Annual Conference, which is going to be held this year in a virtual manner, but it is going to be held, and there may be resolutions from the league that require voting by designated delegates. And so Madam City Clerk, would you like to briefly outline, summarize your report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Let me see if I could, one moment, please, let me, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Perfect. Wonderful. I'm just going to share my, turn my camera on, but I'm looking at you. Just as a way of background, the city of Hayward is a member of the League of California Cities, and as you stated, the league's annual conference is scheduled for October 7th through October 9th. And as you indicated, due to COVID-19, the league will hold a virtual conference this year. According to the league's bylaws, the city council must designate the city's voting delegate and up to two alternates by its formal resolution. In preparation of the October 9th business meeting, the city council will discuss and vote on the resolutions at the council meeting currently scheduled for September 22nd. Currently, Councilmember Salinas is the city's delegate to the League of California Cities East Bay Division, and Councilmember Waha is the city's alternate. As of the publication of the staff report, Mayor Halliday and Councilmember Salinas had expressed interest in attending the conference, and as I understand, they are planning to register as soon as the registration information is available. So in summary, staff is recommending that the city council designate a voting delegate and alternates as Hayward's representatives to the 2020 League Annual Business Meeting at the conference, and the council adopts the resolution designating the voting delegate and alternate. That, Mayor, concludes the report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Are there any questions from council on this? I guess, yes, Councilmember Waha?
Sorry, and thank you to our city clerk for presenting. Just real quick questions, I know that the migranic is just shut down. Anyways, the resolutions for discussion and kind of, you know, how we're going to move this, I know it was referenced in the staff report. Eventually, I just want to know, will we as council get the list of resolutions, number one? And then number two, if, as the mayor is the primary person that will vote, will we understand the position ahead of time on whatever resolution, you know, is decided? And is that the mayor's individual stance or the city's formal stance?
Typically, we bring the resolution packet to the council for a vote, and that is how the mayor would vote or whoever the delegate is.
I would certainly follow the direction of council. I have to say that I don't know what resolutions are being proposed, that hasn't.
Haven't seen them yet.
We haven't seen them yet. Often, they're not really things that are all that controversial, sometimes they don't really involve us or, you know, aren't really relevant to the city of Hayward, they may be relevant to some other area of the state. So it just depends. But yes, definitely, I would, the plan is for us to have those resolutions, to bring them back in a meeting being held in late September, correct?
On October 22nd.
The resolutions become available in September, and currently, we have September 22nd as the date for the resolutions to come before council.
Yes, and then the conference is in October, but, yeah, so, yes, it would certainly be my intent to, you know, to follow the direction of council on, you know, on the resolutions when we have a chance to view them and discuss them. Were you planning to register for this?
You know, it's usually at cost, and I sometimes don't want to spend the city's money on things like this, but I'm happy to do it, but I'm the alternate, so it's basically, from my understanding, it's you as the mayor, then I believe Councilmember Salinas, and then it, you know, I'm the last choice if it need be.
Well, yeah, they will ask for two alternates, up to two alternates. It's a little different this year, we're not going anywhere, and I'm not even sure what the cost is going to be this year because, you know, without having Well, yeah, they will ask for two alternates, up to two alternates. It's a little different this year. We're not going anywhere. And I'm not even sure what the cost is going to be this year because, you know, without having an actual physical conference, I would have, I would have hoped that the registration fee is quite lower.
Cheaper, yeah.
But, and I would say that, you know, this, I think it's a, I think this year could be a very valuable year to go to this conference because it is where you hear, you can, you know, you can attend. There will be a lot of discussion about some of the issues that are really high on our list right now of things that were, you know, first of all, the COVID and the economic recovery, of course, all of the police matters that we have been discussing tonight. And it's an opportunity to get, you know, to really get some, some information from people really dealing with these same issues throughout the state and ideas and expertise. So I encourage everybody to attend. But this year, it will be different. It will be, you know, looking and trying to, you know, attend Zoom meetings for the different topics. So I, you know, it will be interesting, but we'll see how it goes. So I would encourage you to do that. And I mean, at the very least, you, you would be able to represent us as a delegate should something happen to both councilmen, I guess, both Councilmember Salinas and I. Councilmember Salinas, so are you okay with a plan to have me be the voting delegate, you be the alternate? And Councilmember Wahab, I guess, being the second alternate?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
All right. So, so Councilmember Wahab, did that answer your question?
Yes, no, I appreciate it. I do believe it's informative and thank you for the explanation.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will just entertain a motion for the plan as outlined or a different plan if someone wants to make a motion like to that effect.
And Mayor Halliday, if I may, just so, since this is a ledge business item, we don't have any public.
Oh, right, I'm sorry. I'm going to open the public hearing on this, public comment on this item. Is there anyone who wishes to? Do we have any members wanting to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we don't have any members wishing to speak.
Okay, then I'll close public comment. And now I will entertain a motion.
I move on the item.
Staff's recommendation, which would designate me as the voting delegate and Councilmembers Salinas and Wahab as the alternates?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
All second, Mayor.
All right. So was that Councilmember Marquez, correct? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So mention has been made by council members, or maybe a seconded by Councilmember Marquez. I don't see anyone wanting to comment. Do you want to conduct a roll call with the police? Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll be happy to do that. Councilmember Lambden?
I.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Salinas?
Yes.
Councilmember Wahab?
Yes.
Councilmember Zermania?
Yes.
Mayor Halliday?
Yes. And the motion passes with seven i votes. And thank you very much. And I hope we do get some good ideas. And we will be coming back to council with the resolutions when we get them. So with that, Madam City Manager, do you have any comments this evening?
I do not have comments this evening.
All right. Councilmembers?
Sure, Mayor, I'll be brief if no one else wants to jump in.
Go ahead, Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you. Just to remind the public to please continue to wear your facial mask and to practice physical distancing and limit the times you go out in the community and stay in your, your bubble and your close network. Unfortunately, the cases of COVID continue to rise in our county. I know we'll be on a call tomorrow at 12:00 with the Public Health Department. But encouraging everybody to do their part, wash their hands and take these safety precautions seriously, please. Unfortunately, I'm hearing more and more friends lose relatives as recent as this past weekend. So please take those precautions seriously. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I will echo those sentiments. And Councilmembers Zermania will as well. Councilmember Lambden?
Thank you, Mayor. So just wanted to stipulate for the record that I think when we approved the minutes from the council meeting at the top as an A Kids End Item, we were approving the amended minutes?
Yes. Well, yes, we did receive a, is there anyone who wasn't under the impression that we were approving the amended minutes based on the amendment memo that we received from the city clerk? Hearing no one speaking up saying they weren't aware, Madam City Clerk, we, we, just so it's clear for you, thank you for this, Councilmember Lambden, for picking that up. But, yeah, we did, they were approved with the amendment. And, okay, no, thanks.
Thank you. And, yeah, just very quickly, wanted to congratulate and thank Christine Goin, who was the executive director of the Hayward Area, sorry, let me just do that, the Housing Authority of Alameda County, HACA. She has retired after 30 years in the field and 14 years of as executive director of HACA. And so we thank her for her service. And also welcome Kurt Wiest, who is the new executive director. And then congratulations to Hayward Fire. And thank you to HARD for recognizing them for their work regarding the testing center and all their efforts during the pandemic. And actually, a question quickly for the city manager. You mentioned some changes that were happening at the testing center at the top of the meeting, and don't need to go through that again. But will people be able to preregister? So if they do have insurance and they are willing to share that information, can they preregister to make the work smoother?
I believe there will be the ability to make appointments online with the new system. So I'm assuming that the online app will have that preregistration and all of that information will be collected before you make an appointment. So, yes, correct.
That would be great. Because I understand those lines are pretty long. So that's great. Thank you. And then lastly, participated in a CalPERS stakeholder meeting earlier today. And just a reminder to us that they are, once again, looking at the increases. The returns are better than they were earlier in the year, but they're still only, they're not even 5% return. And so that means that over the next three years, we're going to get yet another increase in employer costs. And so I'm hoping, Madam Mayor, perhaps the mayors, can have some collective advocacy, or I'm happy to brainstorm other ways. But, you know, they, they have some investment approaches that they probably need our support on. So that's fine. But in addition to that, they absolutely need to hear from us that this, you know, they can take a long-range goal, a long-range approach to investment, but their short-range approach to doing that is asking us for more money, which we don't have. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lambden?
Thank you for that. And I just, well, okay, I was, go ahead. Councilmember Wahab?
Sorry, do you, do you, I'm just trying to remind you of an announcement for Supervisor Gail Steele, if you want to make that as well, if that was on your list.
Oh, sure, thank you. So there will be a public memorial for Supervisor Gail Steele, who passed away a few weeks ago. And that will be August 1st at 10:00 a.m. It will be held by Zoom. The city is generously hosting that. If you would like the Zoom link, please contact myself or any of the council members. And we're happy to have everybody included in that. So, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to, I, I hope that we can put that out through our own social media too, that that's occurring. I think that would be appropriate. Thank you, Councilmember Wahab, for thinking of that. And I was just going to say in response to your comments, Councilmember Lambden, that I think that the league conference might have a few, you know, sessions and discussions regarding that very issue of the CalPERS situation. So, thank you. Councilmember Salinas? Councilmember Salinas, are you with us?
Yes.
Have your hand up?
Yeah, I just started talking, but I didn't unmute myself.
Oh, okay.
But I just wanted to reemphasize, you know, what Councilmember Marquez said about washing your hands and, you know, wearing a mask and watching your distance. And that's one of the reasons why I have on my avatar icon for this meeting is me wearing a mask. So I just really want to reinforce this idea about wearing a mask. It is absolutely important to wear a mask to slow or stop the spread. And so that's what we're, that's what we're working for. So, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other council comments? Announcements, reports?
Mayor, I did put a comment in the chat asking that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I am planning to do that, yes. I have that, I actually had, yes, we will, definitely.
Thank you.
Yes, I have that ready, but to go. But if there's no other council comments, I do have one really that has to do, last evening, we, we have had a lot of things on our agendas lately. So we had a special work session meeting last evening with two items. One is plans for some traffic calming improvements along a good, good portion of Hattonwood Avenue. And the other one was on a proposal, a regional proposal by the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority, which runs the Capitol Corridor train that runs from San Jose to Sacramento and stops, several of them at least do stop at our Hayward Station. That is in the Canary area, at the, kind of at the west end of B Street. And there is a proposal that would eliminate that station and eliminate Hayward from having a station along this route and would shift the route from the current Niles, they call it, what do they call it, Niles something? Anyway, the line that runs more through central, the central part of the county and in our area through the Burbank area, where the station is. And it would shift it out to the coastal line that basically runs out through the west, through our area. Well, there are some, there is some housing and industrial development out there too that it runs through. But, but anyway, I, we had a, we had a work session on that as the council last night. And I think that council expressed many concerns about this project. And I'm hearing them as well from mayors and council members and residents of our neighboring cities. We are actually getting email now on this issue, asking us to oppose this project. So I just wanted to make people aware of that and check out the special council meeting work session of July 20th. That can be accessed through our website if you want to hear about that discussion or just, you know, look into the issue and let us know what you think of it. So with that, yes, tonight, we are going to adjourn our meeting in honor and memory of John Lewis, congressman, civil rights icon. I think that he probably fought longer and harder and more effectively than, than anyone else I can think of in the, in the civil rights movement to end racism and secure civil liberties for all Americans. And that he should pass away. I know he has been ill for a while, and it probably wasn't a great surprise. But still, to have him pass away during this time when we are nationally still trying to achieve the goals that he worked his life to try to achieve is, it's a little jarring. I wish we could have achieved more that he could have seen in his lifetime. And I think we owe it to him to keep on working and striving on these issues. He, we have lowered our flags to have staff. Thank you, Madam City Manager, for doing, seeing that that was done. I think our whole nation, I mean, he wasn't from our, our area. But, but we owe a great deal to him. And it is very fitting that tonight, we adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of the very honorable John Lewis. We're adjourned.